First time with the gavel.
Good evening. I'm your new town moderator, Brutus Canareggi. At this time, I'd like to declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published, and that the reading of the warrant is waived. So, welcome. How many people here for the first time? Awesome. All right? Let's have a great town meeting. Secondly, tonight is, or today is, November 10th. It's the birthday of the Marine Corps. It's also the day before Veterans Day. So, I'd just like to recognize all our veterans that are here today. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask Mr. Peter Beruri, Chairman of the FinCom, who is also a fellow veteran, to lead us. Thank you, Peter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first thing I'd like to do is introduce the Select Board, Chairperson Aaron Underhill, Board Member Craig Schultz, and Aaron Rosenfeld. Town Administrator is Mike Jazinski. Our Town Clerk is Lisa Harden. Our Town Council, Kate Fedorff. And then our Finance Committee. Chairman is Mr. Peter Beruri, stood up earlier. Our Vice Chair is Jody Gazone. Peter Underhill, Joyce Budharty, Patrick Gatto, John Lor, Kathy McGinnis, Sarah Rains, and John Sidon. So, thank you. Kath, you know, a couple of things really goes to putting this together. This is way more people than we thought, which, like I said, is really cool. But, you know, a lot of this goes, we have to thank Kathy Smith and all the tellers. She's a deputy clerk. And a lot of, if we have to have a standing count, we have to do stuff. All the clerks are the ones that really help us out. One thing I gotta do, we should, I do need a deputy moderator tonight, and the person I chose is Nate Meltinsky. He's also a constable in town. He's actually the first guy I ever met in Millis 23 years ago, when we lived out on the old sheep farm, believe it or not. So, he's a good guy. So, can I get a second on that nomination?
Second.
The motion's been made in second. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There are few items on the warrant that require a two-thirds majority of vote. Okay? Normally, we have to have a standing count for such votes.
Thank you.
But if, with the assistance of this body, I can be authorized to declare an obvious two-thirds majority of vote, if you assent me to do this. So, if you allow me to do this, could you please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry. Okay, I'm just gonna go over some, you've got a lot of new faces here, I'm gonna go over some general rules that we like to do at town meeting. So, this meeting is governed by town meeting time and local bylaws. I will explain procedures as needed, and will recognize requests for points of order. I'm gonna tell you right now, this is the first time I'm doing this, so I might make a mistake, so that's why I have town council here. Okay? So, if you think I'm making a mistake, don't be afraid to call me on it. I'll tell you if you're wrong, though. Get there. Those who make motions, okay, I'm sorry. The first motion for each article will generally be made by a FinCom member who will be presenting that. Okay? Those who make the motions, if them or anybody else, will have the first opportunity to speak on their motion. Motions, and motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for the Minister of Clerk, corrections. I will accept friendly amendments, and we will help with the procedure if we get to that. I will try to balance discussion as best I can. What I'd like is everyone to have a chance to speak on a matter, but be certain to a point, I'm gonna really try to avoid repetition, and I'd ask you to do the same. For example, if a traffic study's brought up, you know, two times, we don't need to keep talking about that traffic study unless you have new pertinent information about that traffic study, or maybe a different one. Typically, as allowed, there's five minutes at the mic. You're allowed to come up and talk for five minutes. That's a long time. So, hopefully, you can gather your thoughts and talk in five minutes. Okay? Three minutes a second time to the mic, but don't be surprised if I try to harry along a bit. Okay? I may allow someone with a new info to speak a third time, but by law, I don't really have to. But if you really have new information, the third time, we'll work with that. I really, I hope you understand, I really encourage people to speak tonight. That's what this, that's what this former government's all about. You get to stand up, you get to talk. But, you know, when we do that, all comments and questions shall come through me. You just can't yell stuff out. You go to Mr. Moderator. You need to be at the mic. If you have a mask on, you please leave your mask on if you feel comfortable, but recognize the fact that you have to speak up, because these mics don't always work. And if you're speaking and we can't hear you, they're gonna signal me, because a lot of folks at home are watching it, you have to speak up. When you come up to the mic, please give your name and address. There are some excellent topics on the warrant, as I'm sure you all know, that's why you're here. I hope we have a spirited debate, and that this meeting both supports the challenges of the issues that are presented. However, I expect all comments to be respectful and civil. Okay? I do not want to hear facts and your opinions. I do want to hear facts and opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else is saying. Allow them to speak. Comments should be, not be personal, and be directed at an individual. In other words, be kind to your neighbor, even if you may not agree with them. They're neighbors. We all live in this community. And stick with the topic at hand. We have many local officials, and between me and them, we will try to get any questions answered. I will, I will ask for a vote, a voice vote. No shouting, you know, doesn't really matter, we're gonna get through that. If I cannot discern the result, I ask for a show of hands. If that doesn't work, we're gonna have you stand, and the vote will be counted with the help of the clerks. I respect the call of all the questions or motion to cut off debate, but with that said, anyone lined up to speak at the mic, if it's called, is still gonna be allowed to speak on that topic. And I understand if I think it's premature, it comes up and wanna move on something, I might not accept it. I would reject it. Similarly, if I'm hearing a lot of the same comment, I may abbreviate debate, and on my own call for a vote. I am not gonna accept a motion to take articles out of order. The warrant has been posted, it's gone through the proper channels, so we're not gonna just jump to Article 23. Okay? We're gonna stay in order as we go through. If you didn't know, there's a variety handouts that have been put out on the table. If you didn't get them, then you should. And then finally, I'd like to just recognize a couple of people here. We have our new state representative, James Arena DeRose. I'm sorry, sir. Joining us now. And then finally, I'd like to thank the first responders in the town of Millis that take care of us all the time, the Millis Police Department, the Millis Fire Department, and the Millis Public Works. So, thank you. Are you ready? Want to start the warrant?
Good evening. The Millis Finance Committee is comprised of nine volunteers. We've already introduced ourselves, or brusid to death for us. Before I get too far, I just wanted to echo your thanks, and I also wanted to give thanks to the election workers yesterday who did a fantastic job. Thank you very much. The duty of the FinCom is to review town meeting warrant articles as presented by the Select Board and make recommendations to town voters. In order to make recommendations, the Fin, excuse me, the Finance Committee meets weekly for two to three months, leading up to spring and fall town meetings. Town departments, committees, and boards provide information, present informational presentations to the FinCom, as well as respond to inquiries. Once adequate background information has been provided, the FinCom formally discusses the articles with each member given an opportunity to speak for or against. Finally, the Finance Committee conducts a formal vote to make its recommendation for town voters' consideration. Traditionally, Millis convenes two town meetings per year. During the spring town meeting, the main focus is on establishing the town's operating budget for the following fiscal year, which runs from 1 July to 30 June. There could be other initiatives as well, as capital expenditures needing voter approval. Tonight's meeting generally focuses on allocating so-called free cash, or available discretionary funds. I never like to say, free cash, is a bad name. Doesn't say what it is, it's not free. It's yours. Free cash is certified by the state, and it is made up of turnbacks from unused departmental funds from prior fiscal year budgets, revenues in excess of budget estimates, and any unused warrant article funds from prior fiscal years. The free cash amount is typically between $400,000 and $500,000. This year, Millis has 2.9, over $2.9 million in certified free cash. Due to the unpredictable and varying nature of free cash, it is typically used to fund non-recurring items, or used to fund reserve or stabilization accounts. It is not wise to allocate free cash on operating budget costs due to the fluctuating amounts from year to year. Capital expenditures. This year, requested capital expenditures are contained in Article 4 and Article 5. An appropriation is requested totaling $158,907 for four items in Article 4. Article 5 seeks appropriation for $500,000 from free cash for further work to roads and sidewalks, something that is a popular topic on the forum at Dunkin' Donuts and this, in town meetings, so I hope that will make some people happy. There are also two other significant articles not involving free cash. Article 7 requests appropriation for $1.3 million for feasibility study for the Millis Middle High School repair, renovate, and/or addition project under the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, and you'll hear me say that several more times tonight. The feasibility study is required in order to qualify for MSBA cost sharing. Article 8 requests appropriation of $16 million for construction of a new senior center at Cassidy Farm. This article follows completion of a study to develop options and selection of a new location for the Council on Aging. In order to proceed, a two-thirds town meeting vote would need to approve an appropriation, and a ballot measure for a debt exclusion override would be required. Other articles, there are four petitioned articles tonight, Articles 25 through 38. One certified as having the requisite, requisite number of voter signatures, petitions are added to the warrant for town meeting consideration. There are 28 total articles to be presented, so let's get started. Brutus.
Article 1.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,317.42, transfer the sum of $2,419.11 from sewer enterprise reserves, and transfer the sum of $4,383.12 from water enterprise reserves, for a total sum of $14,119.65 for unpaid bills, as written in the warrant.
A motion being made in second, is a further discussion.
Mr. Moderator. This article is approved, is, if approved, is a semi-annual article to fund bills incurred in the previous fiscal year. The bills for this town meeting total $14,119.65, and will be funded from free cash, sewer, and want water enterprise funds, reserve funds. These bills are received after the close of the fiscal year, ending in June 2000, June 30th, 2022.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article unanimously. A four-fifths vote is required.
Is there any further discussion? Deputy of the room? Thank you. This is a four, this is a four-fifth vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. How the other room do? Thank you. Article 2?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer from marijuana impact fees, free cash, the sum of $204,285.42 for additional wages and expenses not sufficiently funded under Article 3, operating budgets, of the May 2nd, 2022 annual town meeting, as written in the warrant.
Is there further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. This article, if approved, would authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of $204,285.42 for marijuana impact fees, which are included in the fiscal year 23 certified free cash. These funds will be used to pay for the wages and expenses that were planned to be supported by these funds. These expenses were included in the FY 23 operating budget, but because free cash isn't certified until the fall of each year, we were unable to authorize the transfer of these funds to support these expenses, as listed in the warrant, until this fall town meeting. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this warrant article? Please come to the mic.
Hello. My name is Jessica Hasenfuss. I live in 246 Farm Street. I'm sorry if I sound a little ignorant, but I'm an immigrant, and there's many things that I don't really understand. Can you explain a little bit more about that? Because I'm like, literally, like, I don't, I'm sorry.
What part, what part would you like to be explained?
About the marijuana part of it. Like, I don't, I'm sorry.
I can try, just 'cause I know he's been to planning board. So, we have a marijuana distribution facility in town, and part of their agreement with the town is they have to give the town a certain amount of money every year. So, this money, it's been identified as $204,000, give or take, has to be spent. The FinCom has looked at different things through the selectmen, and this is what they're recommending that money be spent on.
And what is that money gonna be spent on, the town? Like, directly?
Do you wanna go through the list?
Sure. Mr. Moderator. So, as part of this, roughly $200,000, the funds will be used for administrative support for the host community agreement, which is where the funds come from. There's an agreement with the marijuana facilities, and so the funds that are given to the town have to be used in certain ways, and that has to be administered. So, $9,200 will be used for those, that administrative support. $35,000 will go for social work services, which will benefit the whole community. About $40,678.92 would go for a school resource officer for salary for that. $11,960 would be for a team program coordinator within the recreation department. $71,631 would be for a school adjustment counselor, and $35,815.50 would be for a social emotional program teacher at the schools. So, all of these are items that were included in the budget for this year for the town, but we couldn't allocate the funds to support these programs until the free cash, this extra funds, were certified by the state. Now, they've been certified, so now we can allocate the funds for these programs that were already approved within our budget.
And that's all here?
Yes, that is.
Everything that you just said is here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't have this thing.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Deputy Moderator, further discussion over there? Thank you. You need to come to the mic, sir?
Stepping on people trying to get out. Good for you, getting up and asking questions, which I'm sure is very intimidating. Good for you.
Sir, I need your name and address.
Steve Denoyan, 62 Glen Allen Boulevard. The marijuana fund, I heard someone say it has to be spent. So, is that in this fiscal year it has to be spent? Why can't that just go to, you know, the surplus fund that we have?
Do you want me to answer that? Go ahead.
Do you want me to? Do you want me to answer?
Go ahead. You wanna answer? Town Council will answer that.
So, am I on? Oh. Am I on now?
Mr. Moderator, if you want.
So, with the passage of recent legislation relative to marijuana establishments, there is a new way to calculate host community agreements, and you have to justify your expenditures over the course of each fiscal year, rather than saving it up and building it up for a bigger project, let's say. So, future payments will be based on the actual expenditures we have in prior fiscal years, if that helps.
Okay. So, it's basically, you, yeah, you can't store it up, you can't transfer it to your surplus fund or anything like that. It really has to be done in this fiscal year. That's, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I understand it. Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Beruri.
I'd like to just add on to that answer, just to make sure that there's complete understanding of the revenues that the town receives from the sale of marijuana. There are actually two different types of revenue that's received. The first is from, it's basically a sales tax, it's 3% of sales. And that, those, that instrument to collect sales tax is more or less perpetual unless the state changes the law. So, as long as there is a marijuana retail sale business in town, and as long as the law stays the same, the town will receive 3% of sales. That money does not need to be used for an impacted program or service. The second portion is what we just talked about, is the host community agreement, and from that host community agreement, there is impact funds. It's also 3%, but it's finite. It's only five years from the start of sales, and we are within, I think we're in the third or fourth year of that agreement. At the end of the five years, it goes away. So, currently, Millis is receiving 6% of the sales from Comcan, more or less. But, within a year or two, it's gonna go down to 3%. Just wanna make sure that's clear, because the 3% that's more or less perpetual can be used anywhere within our budget. The host community funds and the impact funds have to be something related to an impact that we've justified to the state from the sale of impact funds, hence the social worker, hence school resource officer. Those things have been deemed to be caused or necessary to allow sale, retail sale of marijuana within the town.
Thank you. And I also would like to add that, that's the second, third percent, or 3%? That's the state. So, the gentleman sitting over here, we just elected, remind him that Millis likes the 3% that we get off those marijuana sales. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Karen Lane, 36 Charles Way. Is this a Commonwealth mandated program for each town that has marijuana dispensaries?
It's an option in the town, selected to do this numerous town meetings ago.
Then my follow-up is, why isn't the taxes being used to pay for this, pay these expenses that are caused by the dispensaries in the town? Why is the town residents paying for these expenses because the expenses are incurred through the dispensaries?
There's, the expenses through the dispensary is not the town's burden. That's a private entity. We are just taking money from them, they're giving it to us, and we're deciding how to spend that money.
But, are you decide, is this free cash that you're using, or you're using it from the taxes that they're paying?
It's not tax money.
Then, where is the money coming from?
The dispensary.
From the marijuana.
It's, okay, let me clarify. It's tax money, but it's not property tax money.
No.
It's like a sales tax money.
That's exactly what I was trying to find out. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Thank you. Just a reminder, going forward, if anybody has any comments, you don't have to raise your hand, just come up to the mic so we can kinda move things along. Is there any other comments on this motion? This is a simple ma-
Question. You mentioned that this only goes for the five-
Ma'am, I need your name and address.
Donna Wright, 149 Farm Street. You mentioned that the initial, we have four or five years, you said that this goes, that we get this extra money on top of the 3%. So, we get the 3% right across the board that stays with us forever, but now you're saying, well, as long as we have a dispensary. And then you said that the 3% that we're getting for about four or five years is what I think, Peter, you said. So, if we're that close to the end of that, all I'm wondering is, where are the budget line items going to be getting paid from once that extra runs out over the last fourth or fifth year? Follow me?
Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
I defer to Mr. Schultz, he's the best person to answer this by far.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, thank you. That's gonna be a decision that's gonna have to be made in four or five years. It's either gonna be, we're going to have to devote normal recurring tax funds to that, or eliminate some of these programs. For instance, the administrative support for HCA, HCA agreement, $9,200, is quite easy. We can cut that from the budget, we won't need to have that anymore, no harm, no foul. As we start getting to the social worker and other positions, this gave us a chance to evaluate whether those are impactful to the community for several years. If we find them impactful, we can have an intelligent conversation about what we keep and what we don't keep, but this was a chance to try these programs, basically, on somebody else's dime, and see if they make sense for this community to maintain. But, come back in two years, and we'll be having that conversation.
Okay, makes sense. It's kinda like a grant. You get a little grant for a little while-
You can think of it as a grant.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeremy Stoll, 50 Walnut Street, and it's my first town meeting, so thanks, everyone. Totally appreciate the comment about it being a non-recurring revenue source for what seems like a recurring expenditure. Is this a fully loaded amount? Does this consider retirement and benefits, or is this just base salary?
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah. The, the expenses are, is that just salaries, just the salary expenses?
So, the, the benefits, the retirement for these HCA-supported positions are going to come from general revenues?
Some of them are not full-time positions, but others are. For instance, the school resource officer, that's a full-time police officer that had existed, and we just moved the funding for the position over to this. For the short term, it's not a new position that was hired. The teen program coordinator is a part-time position at this point, so that's not, no, it's not fully loaded, but it is all the direct salary costs. There are nominal other costs associated with it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? From the other side? Once again, this is a majority, it's a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Oh, yeah, what the other room do? Thank you. See, I gotta, you guys gotta remind me. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to adopt amendments to schedules A, B, and C of the Town of Millis personnel plan, effective as of the beginning of fiscal year 23, as shown in the Finance Committee report.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator. This article would approve the changes to the personnel plan for the Town of Millis, last updated in 2015. The salary, the salary schedule was updated to include the addition of a Finance Committee Assistant stipend, which was previously paid under a different salary classification, a correction to the part-time dispatcher hourly rates, the elimination of hourly rates for positions that have been eliminated, and a change to the reserve police detail rates to match the police collective bargaining agreement. The updates to the personnel plan are to such areas as longevity pay to match collective bargaining agreements, adding the Juneteenth holiday, changing vacation schedules to match collective bargaining agreements, language changes to bereavement leave and parental leave, and an increase in sick leave buybacks at retire- leave, and an increase in sick leave buybacks at retirement by $700 per employee. This personnel plan currently only affects three full-time employees, as many of our town employees are covered under different collective bargaining agreements. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Any discussion from the other side?
No discussion.
Thank you. Once again, it's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? How's the other side do? Motion carries, thank you. Article four?
Mr. Moderator.
Brubbe.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $92,226.75 and transfer from Water Enterprise Reserve the sum of $22,226.75 and transfer from Sewer Enterprise Reserve the sum of 200, excuse me, $22,226.75 and transfer from Stormwater Enterprise Reserve the sum of $22,226.75 for a total sum of $158,907 to fund the following capital items. Town buildings, veterans memorial building, chiller coil replacement in the amount of $45,000. Town buildings, veterans memorial building and library keyless entry system, $25,000. DPW air compressor, $26,967. DPW Chevy Silverado with plow, $61,940, for a total of $158,970. This requires a majority vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Brubbe.
The Finance Committee recommended, recommends by a vote of nine to zero to approve Article four for $158,907 in capital expenditures. Typically, twice a year, town departments review their capital needs and forward projects to the Capital Planning Committee for consideration. Capital Planning Committee evaluates the projects for various factors such as regulatory and statutory requirement, safety and health, criticality of need, impact on operating budget, synergy with strategic plans, and value to residents, among others. Each project is scored and a priority grouping is forwarded to the Select Board for their decision to include on the warrant. Article four includes four items for appropriation. First item is $45,000 from free cash to replace chiller coils at veterans memorial building. This work is needed in order to ensure air conditioning is operational and adequate within the town hall. A second item is $25,000 for free cash to install keyless entry systems at the veterans memorial building and library building. This work is recommended in order to improve entry and key control to the many entities that access the buildings throughout the week and almost around the clock. The third item is $26,967, split four ways between the DPW and the three enterprise funds. Those enterprise funds are the Water Enterprise Fund, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the Sewers, excuse me, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. For an air compressor, the existing mobile compressor is well beyond its serviceable life. The equipment fulfills a variety of needs for the DPW to maintain and service the roads and utility systems. The final item is $61,940, also split four ways between the DPW and the enterprise funds for a Chevy Silverado with plow. This purchase replaces a vehicle which is beyond its serviceable life. In addition to use by the DPW to maintain roads and utility systems, it is also used to plow in the winter. There is no tax growth associated with these four items as it's coming from free cash. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Amy Broleson, 3 Lansing Way. I'm all for a lot of the things you outlined in this article, but I think keyless entry to the tune of $25,000 in a time of inflating and people trying to afford other things, I mean, we have to be very fiscally responsible for some of this? Is it possible to look at some of these line items and think, do we really need to spend that money right now? Are we going to be using people's tax dollars appropriately in a time of inflation? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Once again, if you'd like to speak, please get in line.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Fiedler, 111 Union Street. I believe this is more of a security issue for the town buildings and library. You know, it's a system that, you know, it's needed, so it's more of a security thing for the town buildings and given today and the way it is, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Prohodsky, 166 Spring Street. Were these things put out for bid? I mean, $26,000 for a compressor, $25,000 for a keyless entry system? Sounds ridiculously expensive.
Have you bought anything lately? Everything is ridiculously expensive.
Yes, I have.
Okay, I will tell, oh, sorry, sir, I will tell you, anything the town has to buy has to go through strict mandates of procurement through the state, and she has a bid process that goes out there. Okay? $26,000 for a compressor, for a large compressor, is pretty much what they get now. It's a toe behind compressor, this isn't something down there, okay?
So this is for like a toe behind and like for running a jackhammer?
Yes, sir. Cleaning, you know, forcing air out of sewer lift stations, things like that.
Okay.
And then a truck?
The truck I'm fine with.
The truck's a pretty good price, trust me.
The truck I'm very fine with, that's a great price.
And they do not get leather seats, they don't get power windows, okay? They still have the cranks.
I am questioning the $25,000 for the keyless lock system, though. I really am questioning that cost. I mean, I can go on Amazon and buy a key lock-
Thank you. We'll try to answer.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ziski.
Mike Kozinski, Town Administrator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've actually held off on purchasing the keyless entry system for some time. We just recently put this forward to the Capital Committee. We do have a lot of concerns about the security of both the veterans memorial building and the library because of the value of these buildings to the community, the investment that the community has put into these, and to allow effective access to appropriate people at appropriate times. We do, we did get a quote for this item, and the quote came out to this amount. But to answer the gentleman's question, we are required to go out and solicit three quotes for this, so we will be doing that if this is approved tonight. So rest assured that we'll go through a full procurement process. This is a worst-case scenario because this is simply one bid. So if we get a more competitive bid, we will go with them and it'll be less. So, but this is a worst-case scenario for this. And we do have a lot of people that do activities at the VMB on the weekends, you know, with, you know, basketball programs, other programs, and this will provide additional security and tracking for who's coming and going out of the building, and certainly can save some funds and time of people having to come and give access and when people are coming in and people are leaving. So, we feel this is a very legitimate endeavor and that the cost is reasonable.
So what you're saying is-
Excuse me. Questions through the moderator.
All right. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Of course you can.
May I ask a question of this gentleman?
You can ask through me.
Okay, I'll ask through you. So you're going to hand out pass codes to individuals who are using these facilities? Is that what you're talking about for the keyless system, so people don't have to go in and open the doors for them?
That's some of it. Some of it is tracking who's coming and going out of the buildings at different times. We do track, we do track that, and we, and this is, these are two of the only buildings left in the community that don't have these keyless entry systems. Most of the buildings that the town has built in the past seven or eight years have these keyless entry systems, and it's very common in most municipalities to have their buildings have these access systems.
Okay. So, Mr. Moderator, we built the library not more than six or seven years ago. We didn't put a keyless system in it?
I don't know.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, the library was 12 years ago is when we kicked it off, and no, we didn't at that time. It was the last building we built without it. There's always a last building that's built without it, but it has to be done, and that's why we've supported it. It's going to be bid, it's going to be a fair price, and it's a security issue that we felt needed to be addressed at this point.
Okay.
And thank you, sir.
Hi, 40 Glen Allen Boulevard. I just have a question as to, on the Article four, why this particular one says that you would vote to appropriate and raise by taxation, transfer from available funds or borrow. All the other items, just transfer the money. If it's free cash, is there an issue about they might raise taxes for this item or borrow?
Mr. Schultz.
The way, thank you, the way the articles are written in the warrant, it gives every possible funding source that could be used, because when the warrant's written, we don't know the funding that's going to be used. Taking a shotgun and saying, it's going to be money from someplace.
But Article five-
But when the motion is made by the Finance Committee, and I've got it in front of me, they specifically said that they're going to transfer from free cash.
Okay.
Transfer from Water Enterprise and transfer from Sewer Enterprise and Stormwater Enterprise Reserve Funds.
Okay.
So when the motion's made, and that's for all of these articles, they will tell you exactly where the money's coming from. The other one's kind of a shotgun that says, we're going to get money from someplace, we got to figure that out.
Okay. It's just that five and six and the others just only say transfer.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion on the other side?
No, sir.
Once again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed?
Aye.
Other side?
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Warren Arkell, five.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 for road sidewalk construction, design, repair, and maintenance.
Second.
Motion made second, is there further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
If approved at this November town meeting, the town benefits by being able to receive bids during the winter with work commencing in the spring. If passed, priorities will be decided upon by agreement between the DPW and the Select Board. The DPW and the Select Board have a full understanding of the current and upcoming needs for road sidewalk construction, design, repair, and maintenance, and are therefore best positioned to use that money in a way that best serves our town's interests. This fund will likely be used for urgent conditions. The maintenance and improvement of our public ways is a continuous goal of our town. The Finance Committee unanimously supports and recommends approval of this article. Passage requires a majority vote. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Other side?
No discussion.
Hi, Jessica Hausenfuss, 246 Palm Street. Sorry, it's me again. So, I am a mother of four. One graduated from Millis High School, and my four kids were athletes. $500,000 in sidewalks and look at all fields. I volunteer as a co- have a chance because people never, so, I don't know, sorry. $500,000 sidewalks, I just honestly, why don't, why don't we really add in?
So, ma'am, I partially heard what you said. This money will be used for roadways and sidewalk repairs, and that will be determined by the Selectmen and the Public Works, and I'm sure they'll have a meeting on that and you can talk about it then. This is just an appropriating of funding, it's not deciding where it's going to go. And as far as sports fields go, that's not part of this. Thank you.
I understand it's not, but I've been waiting for a few years now to keep on the meeting, and for some reason, it's not important enough for the ball, for the town, to have kids playing in these fields.
So, ma'am, I totally agree with you. I think the fields are awful in this town, and there's been many residents, including myself, that have come at different times to try to get improvements to the town. We've asked for this before a town meeting, and it's been shot down at a town meeting. So I would encourage you to go to the Selectmen's office, go through the process, and speak before them regarding improvements to fields. But it's not part of this question. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? From the other side? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. Sir, I'm sorry, I've said numerous times, if you'd like to speak, please stand up and come to the mic. Okay? Thank you. The other side, all good?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Article six?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town move to transfer from free cash the sum of $45,000 to pay for repairs to Major's Field and Softball Fields 1 and 2.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
If approved, the town would repair Major's Field and Softball Fields 1 and 2. The extreme drought conditions from the summer resulted in unprecedented sod failure at these fields, the scope of which is beyond budgetary and maintenance allowances. The intent of this article is for these public fields to be in good condition when the kids start back up playing in April. Should the town not pass this motion, the continuation of the poor conditions may potentially create a hazard to our kids. So that our fields do not fall victim to drought again, a field watering exception to the state mandated drought watering restrictions is being sought by Millis in our water rights usage renewal agreement, which is part of Article 15. We are hopeful that that field watering exception, we're hopeful for that field watering exception, absent that exception, and considering this experience from the past summer, the town is cognizant of money saved through preventative watering and intends to seek creative solutions for watering if needed. The Finance Committee unanimously supports and recommends approval of this article. Passage requires a majority vote. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ma'am, I have never seen government move this fast. You, you literally brought up about improving the fields, and they are doing it right now. This is amazing.
Can I answer to that?
Yes, you may.
Why don't we do $45,000 to sidewalks and $500,000 to the field?
That's not part of this question.
I mean, I mean, can we motion on that?
No. Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, is there? They need to come over here to speak. They do. It's my rules, that's what I was told. They need to speak on this side, they need to be on camera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim Davis, 23 Pleasant Street, Mr. Moderator, through you. I'd like to inquire if Community Preservation Act funds were considered for funding this article?
Mr. Schultz.
This article came up very short-term. It didn't have time to go through the process that the Community Preservation Act requires. They have hearings, they have meetings. This came up as an emergency article when the fields were brought to our attention, what was it, two, three weeks ago? It was, and the only way to get it on the warrant for this growing season was to put it on without going through the Community Preservation Act process. That would have taken months, and it should have, it could have been used, it could have been considered, but our thought was, we don't want to have the fields unusable for next baseball season, so we reluctantly went this direction with it. I would have loved to have seen the Community Preservation Act considered, but there just wasn't time, if we're going to try to make it usable for the next baseball season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It's a majority vote. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Article seven, this would be good. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move that the Town of Millis appropriates $1,300,000 for the purpose of paying costs of conducting a feasibility study of the renovation, addition, or replacement of the Millis Middle High School located at 245 Plain Street in Millis, Massachusetts 02054, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for the town, may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority-
for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Milis Middle High School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under the, and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement, discretionary program based on need. As determined by the MSBA, and any cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by the receipt, and received by, excuse me, from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the town and MSBA.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Berube.
The Finance Committee recommends by a vote of nine to zero, approval of the high school, middle school feasibility study. It is estimated that the middle high school building needs at least $8.5 million in major repairs to its roof, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC system, and supporting electrical system. In addition to replacement of these systems, there are some space deficiencies that constrain the staff and faculty's ability to appropriately provide academic services. Milis Public Schools applied to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, program in 2021, and was accepted into the program earlier than anticipated. This summer, MSBA potentially funds up to 50%, anticipated this summer, excuse me. The MSBA potentially funds up to 50% of eligible project costs, including reimbursement of this feasibility study. It should be noted that MSBA receives its funding through 1% of every dollar collected in Massa- in Massachusetts' 6.25% sales tax, and only selects a small percentage of applications received. The Milis Public Schools District identified these needs in its Facility Master Plan, conducted by Tetra Tech in 2014, and participated in the town's Capital Planning Committee to plan for and prioritize these needs annually. The school was built in 1960, added on to in 1966, and renovated in 1999. The middle high school is approximately 125,000 square feet. Other than minor roof maintenance and repairs as needed, the roof has not been replaced since 1991, and is beyond its useful and expected life. The HVAC system is 21 years old and does not adequately filter air, nor is it able to handle higher temperatures common in late spring and early autumn. Consequently, many standalone filtration and cooling units are in service, which further strain the electrical capacity. The facility energy management system is not functioning. The statement of intent also seeks study of the security of technology systems, as well as sufficient space needed for modern educational programming. Programs like STEAM curriculum currently use hallways for projects. Counseling and/or therapy for special education is conducted in the library or storage closets. Lunchtimes currently start at 10:30 a.m. because all of the students cannot be accommodated in the space in a smaller window of time. I emphasize that the work and associated costs described are likely the minimum costs. The feasibility study output is based on review of the educational program, facility conditions, and potentially other areas, including outdoor spaces, that need to be brought up to acceptable standards, along with review and determination of eligible reimbursable costs. The MSBA process is fairly rigid and prescribed timelines and with prescribed timelines and deliverables. However, the benefit of successfully adhering to the process is significant, state funding of up to 50% of eligible building renovation and addition costs. The next milestone in the MSB process, MSBA process, is for Milis voters to approve appropriation of $1.3 million for this feasibility study. Approval is required by the 28th of March, 2023. Important elements of the feasibility study will include review of district education program, evaluation of educa- excuse me, existing conditions, environmental studies, multiple options for town consideration, schematic designs, construction cost estimates, and all MSBA required documentation. The $1.3 million feasibility study cost breakdown is as follows. $260,000 for project management, 20%. 65% or $845,000 for design and engineering fees. 10% is for environmental studies, and 5% is for contingency of $65,000. If approved, funding for the study would come from short-term, short-term borrowing capacity resident within the town-approved operating budget. The school committee reported that these costs are recommended by MSBA and an external consultant for a project of this size and complexity. Additionally, these costs are consistent with similar MSBA projects. Many are aware, but it warrants stating, "Milis successfully completed construction of the new Clyde Brown Elementary School via, via the MSBA process a few short years ago." That project was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. The feasibility study will take eight to 24 months to complete. The total time from start of the feasibility study to completion of the construction could take up to six years. This article only appropriates money for the feasibility study. Going forward, if this passes, there will be future votes on how, whether, and which school repairs and improvements are made. As with the Clyde Brown project, future decisions will be made on the extent of the scope of work, and eventually, a town meeting would require two-thirds vote appropriation and a majority valid vote to authorize debt override to fund the actual facility's work. The cost to repair the HVAC and roof is $8.5 million, and probably more now, considering inflationary factors. All or some of that cost will eventually be borne by the town, depending on whether this article passes. Funding and completion of the $1.3 million feasibility study is a critical step in making these repairs and investments into the middle high school with significant funding by MSBA. The $1.3 million appropriation has the potential effect to save the town $5 million or more.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this?
Do we have a session in the cafeteria?
Please send him over. Yes, ma'am.
Linda Sabrowski, 13 Cedar Street. Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering, just listening to the discussion, how confident is the Finance Committee on, because there was a lot of, we may receive the grant, we can get up to 50%. It seems like a lot of uncertainty there. You know, 50% would be great, but 10%, do you see what I'm saying? We don't know how much we're going to get.
I understand.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Berube.
I defer to Ms. Gibbons to answer the question from the school committee. She's at the mic.
Mr. Moderator, Denise Gibbons, School Committee, 8 Paddock Lane.
Thank you.
As part of the MSBA process, through the feasibility study, there is a project funding agreement that will be executed, which will guarantee funds from the state for eligible expenses. As Mr. Berube stated, the process within the MSBA is very prescriptive, and it's very detailed as to what is reimbursable and what is not. Once we sign that funding agreement, we are locked into funding from the state. In addition, during the feasibility study, the percentage of eligibility for reimbursement is also identified. So those are two gates that will happen as part of the feasibility study. Just for reference, for the Clyde Brown School, total cost of the project, eligible and ineligible costs, the town was reimbursed 40% of all costs of the building. So again, because the MSBA is so detailed and rigid, which we have found through Clyde Brown, very much worked to our favor, they have processes along the way and documentation that we execute to guarantee us their funding.
Thank you. Sir.
Mr. Moderator. Gerald, 130, is the microphone working? Can you-
It goes, you know, I would ask you to go over that microphone, if you could. I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. One of these days, we'll get the microphones right in here, folks, so you've been coming for a while.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Jack Fitzgerald, 131 Plain Street.
Thank you.
Very concerned about the camel getting its nose under the tent here with the feasibility study for a new high school, so shortly after we just spent so many millions of dollars for the portion that was not funded by the state on the elementary school. So I would ask that before consideration be given to this, if the chairperson of the Finance Committee could advise the town, how much millions of dollars is still owing on the bond from the elementary school?
Ms. Berube.
I do not have that information handy, but I know somebody in this room who does, and I would request that you ask Ms. Johnston if she has that information available.
Ms. Johnson.
I don't have that information right here. It's approximately, I would say, 28 billion.
And approximately how many millions of dollars is still owing from the police station and the library for bonds?
I don't have that information available right now, but it's available on the website. You can go to the Finance Committee website, and it has a list of all of the debts that we have out, long-term debt, and the balance is left and everything for this year.
Mr. Moderator, I think everybody in this room has seen their tax rates go up so much in property taxes over the past few years with all these large capital expenditures, that we should stay away from any feasibility study for a new high school. So I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scholes.
Yes, sir.
Yorah Friedman-Wills, 5 Frontier. I'm trying to understand, are we approving 1.3 million for the feasibility, of which some portion may be reimbursed? Or are we approving 1.3 million of expenditures from the town, upon which we get more money from top of that?
Mr. Berube.
Both. So, when the, the town would, would pay the 1.3 million dollars upfront, and then once the town signs the funding agreement, at the completion of the feasibility study, and selection of options, and which way the town opts to go, and enters into an agreement with the state, up to 50% or somewhere near there, the feasibility study cost, 1.3 million dollars, would be reimbursed, plus up to 50% of the construction cost. Again, that would be decided along the way during this process, which is very detailed and documented.
Well, right now, we're only talking about the town's spending 1.3 million upfront, of which some portion will be reimbursed. Everything you're talking about further, construction, et cetera, that's up for further decisions and further votes in town meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because right now, we're only talking about 1.3 million.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Denise Gibbons, 8 Paddock Lane. I'd just like to add one item to Mr. Berube's statement. The, should Milis vote to move forward with a project at the conclusion of the feasibility study, then whatever the reimbursement rate that has been identified, that amount will be applied to the feasibility funds of 1.3 million dollars. So let's say it's 50%. Once we, if we were to vote to move forward with a project, then the MSBA would be reimbursing, let's say, 50% of the 1.3 million dollars. So to Mr. Berube's point, we front it in full. If we decide to move forward as a community, then the MSBA would reimburse whatever percentage that they have identified of that 1.3, and then on a go-forward basis, they would also reimburse against eligible fee, fees and items, again, that same percentage.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Michael Crone, 26 Beach Street.
Welcome.
From what was said, the school is 70 years old. We've gotten our money's worth. It's time to do what's necessary for any school of that age. It's time to renovate or replace. We did it with Clyde Brown, now it's time for the middle school, high school. You've done a wonderful job in building that school, and being very modest in the construction of fire station, police station, and library. I have every faith that what you're talking about today is a necessity, as is the education of our children. So I can only say that it only makes sense to be there.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Riley.
Nicole Riley, 258 Village Street, and Milis Planning Board. I did want to just point out something Mr. Berube said. The amount of repairs that are currently due on the property, on the school, the heating system, the roof, those are things we're going to be faced with in the next couple of years, regardless if we do this feasibility study, regardless if we get into the, the school building program, and we're able to do other things. One thing I do want to point out to everybody that may not be aware in this room, Milis, Milis Planning Board in the last two years has granted two special permits to developments that will have approximately 75 homes, three, four family home, bedroom homes moving in. We also have four 40B affordable housing projects in the works, that combined will add another 200 housing units to our town. Now, not all of those housing units will have children, some of them will, some of them will have multiple. So that's 275 housing units in the near future, that even at an average of one child per home, is going to add 275 kids into the school system. For any of, anyone who has put a child through the schools, in the la- in this building in the last 10 years, knows the school is, is too small for the kids we currently have. So if we're, my personal opinion is, if we're going to have to spend this money on roofing, on repairs, why not spend that same amount of money, hopefully, and be able to get money back from the state as well, which, two finance meetings ago, Mr. Berube pointed out, was not the state's money, it's our money that we have paid to them. Let's get it back for us, and be able to do more than just the bare minimum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange Tree Precinct 2. I concur. We're kind of forced into, in some ways, taking advantage of state reimbursements. We're gonna, we're on the hook for fixing the facility one way or another. Let's do it right. I do want, and I brought this up at a Select Board meeting recently, there needs to be cost takeout in the town. We have assets, we should look at leveraging to retire debt. There are probably a lot of things that are going to come out of this project that we are going to get asked to pay for, potentially athletic fields, maybe a number of other things, right? So I also advocate that this project have a must-do figure, a like-to-do that the town would like to do, and therefore get approved, and then everything above and beyond that. So, and I'd like to understand how, as this project progresses, these items will be brought before the town, so that they are well-informed and can voice their opinions as this project goes along.
Thank you.
It's me again.
Yeah, welcome.
Jessica Hausenfuss, 246 Farn Street. I want to say that I, we do need this study. I know that many people in this room and in the other room are concerned about raising taxes with this new school, you know, middle high, high school, but we, me and my husband are a young couple of four kids, three of them being on elementary and high school. So, we pay the same taxes as everybody else, and we do want these taxes to go to a good thing, and a good thing is a new school, high school, middle school. Maybe my, my daughter, who's in fifth grade, will benefit from it, maybe my son, who's in first grade, will benefit from it. I, I really doubt my freshman son will benefit from it, but I think we are growing as a town. There's a lot of people who move in with young kids, so we definitely need a school who will eventually be needing to feed more kids in the school, and I don't think the middle school and the high school is fit for it. And I'm very happy with the Clyde Brown School. I was happy that that was done, and I will ask you, in the nicest way, to use this money wisely, because we do need a middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jeremy Stoll, 50 Walnut Street. I support the, the article, but I have a question on financing based upon something that the FinCom said. You talked about a 1.3 million dollar bond anticipation note through existing resources, and then a school committee was talking about putting it on your 3011 for reimbursement with the MSBA. So- So is this 1.3 million, would this be part of an eventual debt exclusion, or is this 1.3 million part of existing resources inside the levy?
Ms. Scholz.
Well, it's going to depend on the second half of this project. If this goes forward and we go to build the school, then it goes on to the 30-year override exempt debt. If it goes forward, we do the study, and we don't build the school because it's voted down at a subsequent town meeting or at the ballot, then this would go inside our existing levy. We would pay it through normal operating funds. There would not be an override associated with it, but it would be paid through normal operating funds on a 20-, 30-year note, whatever the appropriate number is.
I'd just like to suggest, even if we move forward through eligibility, my day job, I'm the lead administrator for the $259 million Attleboro High School project through the MSBA, and Attleboro put in $1.2 million of its own money inside the levy to do feasibility to begin with. So I would just encourage this body to keep feasibility and anything that we can inside the levy, to keep stuff outside of Prop 2.5 to a minimum.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Richard Nichols, 47 Grove Street. I was a member of the Elementary School Building Committee, and I just wanted to follow up on an earlier comment. Going back to the MSBA, they have specific things that they will or will not reimburse. And because of Newton North, the school that they built that's like a palace, they limited items like athletic fields and things like that. And also, like it was earlier said, each one of these things will come up in a meeting. There's going to be more meetings than you'll ever want to go to that will bring up absolutely everything about this school. So you will have an opportunity to weigh in or talk about it and give your feelings, and then eventually it will come to the town, and it'll be voted on, so.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Kevin Cotty, Exchange Street. Fix the roof. We haven't learned yet that we need to fix the roof. I mean, we've replaced the DPW, we've replaced the Clyde Brown School, we've replaced the library. Fix the roof.
Thank you. Ms. Scholz.
Thank you. The Select Board voted for this unanimously as well, and the way we looked at it is we have 8.5 million of pending costs, as was said, and that number's come up three years ago. So I continually rounded that up to between 9.5 and 10. Just even normal inflation puts you at that level. That's made up of, as Mr. McCarthy said, the roof, big item there, and the boilers and HVA system, as we've said. The way I looked at it and the way I think about it is, if I have a house where the HVA system and the roof is going, and somebody comes up to me and says, "If you replace those two things and you do your kitchens and bathrooms, I'll give you half the money." And that's really what this is coming down to. This is an opportunity just for fix the stuff that we have to fix with routine maintenance. It's going to cost us that money no matter what. Otherwise, in 10 years, we'll have a school that's falling apart because we didn't do the roof. And we have a chance to modernize our school security. We have a chance to modernize for, well, just clean floors, new flooring, new locker rooms, new bathrooms, STEM space, which is now called STEAM space. It changes every couple of years. But that's science, technology, engineering, art, and music. So they keep changing it. Math, sorry. Sorry, not music. Give it another year, there'll be music. But eventually, this gives us a chance to really fix what needs to be fixed, the absolute minimum, and for nearly the same cost, put the school where it should be for quality educational experience. I had three kids graduate from this school. They're doing great. Teachers are wonderful. We need to have a facility that is not going to continue to fall apart over the next 10 years and provides adequate or above adequate services.
Thank you.
That's my thought on it.
Any further discussion? Anybody from the cafeteria?
No discussion.
All right, this is a two-thirds vote. Okay? I'll try, if it's obvious, then we go to the voice. Go to hands, or we have to stand. Okay, but two-thirds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. And confirm that with the other side.
I was corrected. I need to let you know that the motion carried by two-thirds.
And confirm that with the other side.
And I did confirm that with the other side.
No, you've got to confirm that.
I have to confirm that with the other side.
Motion carries by two-thirds.
I have confirmed that with the other side. Thank you, Town Council.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Barube?
I move at the town vote to refer this article for further study by the Select Board, the Council on Aging, and the Permanent Building Committee so that it may be considered at a future town meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Rowby?
The Finance Committee recommends by a vote of eight to one that the senior center project be referred back to the Select Board, Council on Aging, and Permanent Building Committee for further consideration in light of our project cost concerns. The Finance Committee recommends referral because we are open to a project to improve the senior center. We do not, however, recommend this project. We believe a referral motion sends the message that the proposal has merit, but it needs additional work. Milis officially embarked on the process to consider improvements to the senior center in 2019 with receipt of a state-funded earmark grant to fund a feasibility study. The intent of the project was to improve deficiencies with quality and quantity of existing space, as well as consider adequate facility space options for Milis's growing over-60 population. The feasibility study developed options for a new senior center by surveying available sites and studying ongoing and desired council on aging programming. From 2020 through the first half of 2022, members of the Council on Aging and the Permanent Building Committee worked with consulting architects and engineers to select and refine options for consideration by all interested parties. The three options advanced for further consideration and cost estimate were: Option 1, renovation and addition to the Veterans Memorial Building; Option 2, construct a new council on aging at Cassidy Farm; and Option 3, construct a new council on aging at Cassidy Farm with a gym. Four focus group presentations of the three options were made this summer in order to solicit input from the community. The joint PBC and COA working group recommended the Select Board place Option 2 on the fall of town meeting warrant. The Finance Committee began consideration of the senior center project on 5th of October with presentations by the Council on Aging and the Permanent Building Committee. Questions were posed and concerns voiced regarding total cost of the project, impact to sewer and water utilities as a result of this project, and potential for increased costs to sewer ratepayers, increased council on aging operating budget, and concern with increased facility space for the prospect of attracting more council on aging users per day. The Finance Committee held formal discussion and voted on the article at our public meeting held on 19 October. Main concerns raised centered around details of the project's soft costs. Soft costs consist of the additional costs needed to complete a project beyond the labor and materials. Those are known as hard costs. The main components of soft costs are design fees, owner's project management, and contingency costs. Other significant concerns raised were alternate uses of the Cassidy Farm property and what the cost per square foot of this project versus comparable projects. The cost of the project as presented in the warrant article is $1,066 per square foot. However, sampled comparable projects ranged from $310 to $912 per square foot. Consequently, the Finance Committee voted six to three not to recommend Article 8. Subsequently, based on correspondence from the Council on Aging and other inputs received from the Permanent Building Committee, the Finance Committee voted at the November 2nd pre-town meeting to reconsider its earlier vote to not recommend the project. Meeting materials for our consideration at this time included a letter sent from the Council on Aging to the Select Board asking for Article 8 to be withdrawn so that a more broadly supported proposal could be developed in the future. Also within the meeting materials was an email from the PBC chairperson providing the soft cost detail previously requested in responses to our previously discussed FinCom concerns. The PBC requested the FinCom reconsider its earlier vote to not recommend the project, which we did. While it is contended, cost per square foot comparisons are of limited value. Further analysis shows Milis's estimate for soft cost components are outlying, significantly higher than other relevant but more complex projects. It should be noted that Milis's hard cost estimates are, in fact, in line with industry standards and recent-like projects. It should also be noted that Milis's project adds a factor of 7.4% to hard costs to account for inflation from 2022 to potential construction start. The Finance Committee does not take issue with this factor and excludes it from the soft cost comparison to other projects. The Milis Senior Center project estimates design at 15% of direct or hard costs. Stirbridge, for instance, estimates 10% for A&E design or architect and engineer design. Pembroke, another ongoing and similar project, estimates 7%. Milis estimates project management at 10%. Stirbridge assumes 4%. Pembroke estimates 2%. Milis's feasibility study contains a design, pricing contingency, and an owner's contingency of 11.4% or $1.83 million. Stirbridge only includes 5% contingency, and Pembroke's study includes 4% contingency. The bottom line is Milis's estimated costs are significantly higher than other more complex projects. These other projects include retaining walls, elevators, two-story construction, gyms with double quartz and suspended walking tracks. While it is prudent to estimate conservatively by incrementally escalating soft cost factors to ensure adequate funds are approved and appropriated by voters without having to go back a second time, those higher costs potentially translate to millions more in total project costs and long-term taxpayer burden. For perspective, a 5.75 bond rate and an average home assessment value of $462,000 at a $16 million project would equate to an approximate increase in real estate taxes of $303 per year. Put another way, at the same terms, every $1 million in project cost equates to approximately $20 per year tax increase. Therefore, the Finance Committee voted eight to one to recommend referral of this article to the Select Board to work with the Permanent Building Committee and the Council on Aging so that a more fiscally sound project proposal could be further considered by the town. For clarity, a motion to refer here is not binding, meaning that if this motion does not pass, the Select Board is not required to do anything in a specified timeframe. In practical terms, however, if voting citizens refer an article to their elected officials, it can be inferred it is prudent for them to take some action. If the motion to refer fails here, there still would be no approved article for the project to advance. Approved motion to appropriate funds is required for the project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So is a motion to send this forward? Is there anybody for further study? Is there anybody like to discuss this? Don't be afraid. Go on up there. Oh, okay. I think you might have to use the other microphone. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for your ankle. But thank you.
Thank you for your patience. So I just have a couple of questions.
Ma'am, could you just provide your name and address again?
Oh, sorry. Susan Freeland-Singway.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that other senior centers are open to accepting other seniors from different communities. Is that true?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there's the Holliston Senior Center. That's robust, I guess. It's got space and placed plenty of parking and whatever. Just for the, let's say, interim, $16 million is a big ask, whether it's now or in six months. So if I'm looking at just our community, it sounds like schools and education and fixing the high school is the priority. So if we have already a senior center, may not be the best, but it's there, and there's an elevator, and there's a place for people to go. If they don't have the space there, can we partner with the Holliston Senior Center or Medfield and try to work with them to get, if we have so many seniors who need a place to go and activities, can we find a way to partner and maybe alleviate that expense to our town and still keep our seniors happy? Just a question of that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ma'am?
Susan Simpson, 52 Island Road. Mr. Moderator, point of clarification. Can we vote now to not refer this and then vote on the article as it exists?
So right now, we're on a motion, without speaking it correctly, to study this further and move it forward. So we have to vote on this first?
That's what, yes. But if we vote no not to refer it, can we go back and vote on the article, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can. Okay, so I make a motion that we vote on no to defer.
You're going to vote no on the motion on the table right now? That's your recommendation? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Diane McBride, 37 Village.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me the difference between refer and dismiss an article?
Me personally, no, but Town Council can.
That's what she gets paid for.
So essentially, refer is signaling to the Select Board and giving them an instruction to really take a look at this, whereas a dismiss would just kill it. Either way, you're not taking action on this issue tonight, and the board would have to bring it back on a second warrant, right? Because the board, the Select Board, controls the warrant. So they would have to make a new article in, say, the spring or the fall or whenever it was appropriate and place it on the warrant. Otherwise, it could come back with a citizen's petition as well. And I want to clarify one thing, because I think the woman who previously spoke was trying to do something which she didn't articulate, and she was trying to do a motion to amend by substitution, if that's what I'm understanding her to say, right? And what that would mean is that we would put a hold on the motion that's on the floor, and the town would consider a substitute motion, but it's still not proper in the form that she presented, but I think that's what she was driving at.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yes, may I have another one?
Sure. You get two.
So up until two weeks ago, this article was being promoted passionately, a little bit of bullying, very strongly to pass it by the Permanent Planning Committee and the COA. And then two weeks ago, they took down all their signs, and they asked for, a letter was sent out, and they asked for it to be referred. So I think it's only fair, because so much work was put into this, that the article be voted on like it was originally intended. So I would like to make an amendment to the current, I don't know the word, motion to not refer the article to have it dismissed.
If, so, I'm not advocating either way. I want to be super clear here. But part of my job as Town Council is to ensure that everything is procedurally proper, okay? So prior to the board's decision or FinCom's decision to move to refer, a motion was created by not Town Council, but Bond Council, who specializes in the borrowing process, okay? And they prepared a specific motion. So I think your motion would be, I move to amend by... So I think your motion would be, I motion, I move to amend by substitution, and you would articulate what the substitute motion would be. And if you would like it to be procedurally proper, I can help you with the wording. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
So this is what Bond Council prepared. I move that the town appropriate $16 million to pay costs of designing, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new senior center, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. No amounts shall be borrowed or expended hereunder unless and until the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to repay any such borrowing from the limitations on total property taxes set forth in General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), also known as Proposition Two and a Half. And if you were to accept that friendly amendment, you would say, I accept your friendly amendment and move accordingly.
I accept your friendly amendment to move accordingly.
Okay, and then the moderator is going to take two votes, one on the motion for a substitution and then the second on the motion if so substituted, okay?
If she gets a second.
So what we have, so what we have is we're going to take, is there any further discussion?
Does he have a point of order? Don't we have an original motion?
Excuse me. Sir?
A point of order.
I understand a point of order, but you need to come to the mic and identify yourself.
James Angelo, 34 Lavender. I believe we have a motion in front of us first that we have to vote on, don't we? Motion made by Mr. Berube.
Is there any reason why I can't speak?
I just have a point of order. I didn't hear you.
We take the amendment first and then we go back to the main motion. Is there further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. My name is Edward Ginnett, 24 Glen Allen Boulevard in the town of Millis. I have never been so totally and utterly confused. I thought, I thought, Mr. Moderator, that we had a motion in front of us that was very detailed, is a motion to refer. Why can't we take a position on that and vote on it?
Because, sir.
I moved the question.
Sir.
I moved the question.
Sir.
To cut debate on the motion to refer.
Sir, I get to use this.
That's my point of order.
Sir, thank you. So as stated by Town Council, we need to take a vote on the amendment that was read already, and then we can go back. So is there any discussion of the amendment that Town Council read that was approved by our fellow residents?
Yes, there is. Jack Fitzgerald, 131 Plain Street.
Oh, actually, I need a second on that motion.
That's what I was going to point out. It was never seconded, so I don't believe that it's properly presented for a vote just yet.
Well, I'm asking for a second, thank you. Would anybody like to second the motion?
All right, now I would like to discuss it on the substance. I believe there was a procedural error. It hadn't been seconded, so I don't believe it took priority over the original motion.
We got that. Please move forward.
But now we are at the substitute motion, which I believe is erroneous. I fully respect the fiscal integrity displayed by the Finance Committee in recommending this referral. I think that the original motion is correct, that this should be sent back to the drawing board and come up with something that's fiscally responsible so that elderly people can continue to afford to live in this town. And so I recommend voting no on the substitute motion, and I support the Finance Committee's recommendation to refer this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange. Is it possible to put, I guess it's the amendment in layman's terms, in terms of what it's going to actually do?
We can try.
So essentially, if the town meeting were to first approve the amendment and then approve that substitute motion, so there would be two pieces to it. The motion to amend would be a 50% majority, and then the substituted motion would then, which triggers borrowing, require a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Because of the way it was written, a ballot vote would be triggered, okay? And so it would be a question on your ballot at the election because it's a debt exclusion, okay? And so then there would be a second opportunity to determine whether or not you wanted to borrow those funds. Now, the other trick is that the board is the body that determines what questions to put on the ballot.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, Mr. Schultz.
I need your name and address.
Siobhan, oh, that was, sorry. Siobhan Fagan, 6 Stony Brook Drive. The amendment is essentially 20, question 26, right? Is that basically what we're talking about right now?
No.
No, not at all.
Oh, okay. Then I was confused. Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange. I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I think probably others are. If the amendment passes, then the next step is to have a ballot override. Is that correct? So what we're essentially voting on here is skip whatever and simply request or draw or mandate that the next step becomes a two-and-a-half override on the ballot in the spring. Is that correct?
If this, if it passes, yes, the town would somehow have to come up with $16 million, and it would be a ballot question.
All right, so here, let me, let me say what I, what I think the town would like is probably a vote yes or no on referral.
You can't speak for the town. You can speak your own opinion.
Then I'll state my opinion, yes. I'm also very confused in terms of where we're going to end up at the end of this, and I don't want to end up in the wrong place, to be perfectly honest with you. So what I would like to say, or see, is a simple vote on the amendment to refer and then pending that, a vote on the article itself.
We can't do that right now.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Schultz.
Okay, I'm not a lawyer. I'm going to start with that. I work in finance, so I'm going to try to think this through and say it clearly, and I'm going to ask the town attorney to correct me. I'm going to try to put it in terms that I think I can understand. There was a motion by the Finance Committee to refer. Ms. McBride suggested that we amend that to be a vote in favor of the center. Well, no, 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 a vote, a vote that reads, I move that the town appropriates $16 million. So that would be a vote in favor.
It is correct what he's saying.
But let me finish, please, before we start booing, okay? That would then trigger an up or down vote on the center that you can take. It would take a two-thirds majority to vote in favor of it for it to pass, but the motion that she's trying to substitute for the referral is an up or down, so don't boo yet, vote on the article with two-thirds required to pass if it were to pass. At that point, should it pass, it would then go to a ballot where it would take another vote. But I think that's what Diane was trying to do. She was trying to put forward a vote on the article bypassing the entire referral process.
That is correct. According to pounds all.
Is that in more clear terms?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say the same thing.
Have a seat. Yes, sir.
Theodore Iorio, 36 Forest Lane in Millis. I asked my wife today, I said, she goes to this facility we have here for the older people. I said, how many people are there when you go? Is it crowded? She said, well, there's probably eight people, eight men playing cribbage, a table set up with contributions from, I think she says, the Blue Moon. And she said, that's food that you can get there, day-old food, I think it is. And then there's, she said, there's probably about 12 other people there. So there's probably 20 people using this facility. Now, we have competitive facilities, we'll say, around. We have next to Roach Brothers Plaza there, that gym. We have another one to the other side of us. So we'd have to build a internal facility that interested the old people. I know on my property, we have some of these old people doing their walks, because I have a nice space there, okay? I'm not looking for more old people there, but I'm, I'm just giving you the facts, okay? I'm sure my wife would like another, a nice facility, okay? I would too, okay? But it's a question of how many people are going to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. What about our young people? Chairman O'Neal.
Hi, my name's Erin Underhill. I'm Chair of the Select Board. I just wanted to just make a few statements about this, this project and potential vote here. First, obviously, it's a financial impact, and people need to keep that in mind. Bearing that in mind, we do know that we have some building issues with the middle high school that we've already discussed. We also do have some renovation repairs that will need to happen to our town hall. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the table, that there are other things that will need to happen in the coming years. In terms of the senior center, I've done some, some researching and some visitation myself. I've been to Walpole, I've been to Norfolk. What's interesting is they say if you build it, they will come. And it seems that in those other communities, that has proven true. I've spent some time in the senior center. I like to go there and knit with some of the ladies. I've been there to play cribbage. I can say that when they have a program such as Bingo, it is pretty packed, and they are really low on space. They're low on office space to be able to do consultations. The space is absolutely inadequate from everything that I have personally seen down there. I just think it's something worth considering, you know, obviously, there's the financial piece, and then there's the piece for adequate space for there being a center. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
Mr. Moderator, may I ask for a, just an understanding from Town Council? We have a motion to amend on the floor, so is it not correct that first we have to vote whether or not to amend the motion? If that, if, if that vote passes, then we vote on the amendment?
Correct.
If that amendment passes, which would be, as Mr. Schultz said, either yea or nay, if it failed, if they, if the town meeting did not approve the article, the amendment, which was as it was written in our warrant book, it would then go back to Mr. Berube's original motion, which is to defer?
Yes.
So there's the potential of, there's at least two, if not three, votes that we need to take?
Yes, we have two votes anyways right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my name's Edward Ginnett, 24 Glen Allen Boulevard in Millis. I think the current senior center we have here is an absolute disgrace. I'm part of a band, a musical band, and we play in a lot of senior centers throughout the Commonwealth, and this senior center we have is a disgrace as compared to all the ones I've seen in this county and other counties. And I think we have to change it. And to say there's only a few people that come there is ridiculous. If we had a decent senior center, that place would be crowded. I see no reason why we simply can't refer this for further study.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion from the other side?
May I have one more?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Cabibbo.
Donna Cabibbo, 333 Exchange Street. I move the question.
I still have someone who'd like to speak. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Joy Richard, 48 Bow Street. Our Millis Senior Center is located in the basement of an old building built in the early 1900s, 1900s. I have been a taxpayer of Millis for close to four decades. During this time, I, and most likely most of the senior population in this town, have paid for multiple tax overrides for several school buildings, the renovation of the town hall, the new library, the new police station, the renovation of the fire station. No one wants their tax bill to increase, but we voted to support these projects, and we tightened our belts when our tax bills went up for these buildings because, as responsible citizens, we know we must support the infrastructure of this town that provides services to us. The town also provides services to their senior citizens, preferably in a setting that encourages them to gather comfortably, to engage and socialize. I support Article 8 for the new senior center. I don't know if this is the correct one, but I strongly feel the Millis senior population deserves a location other than a few rooms in the basement of the town hall. A new senior center is a long overdue project. We can do better than this for our longtime taxpaying citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take one more question because he's coming from the cafeteria, and then we're going ahead and take a vote.
Colin Morse, 11 Walnut Street. Could the moderator state succinctly or have someone do it for us what the amendment is, the first amendment or the first vote we are taking, what the?
Of course, we will do that.
After all the discussion, I'm unclear what we're actually voting to do.
Of course, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what we're going to do is we're going to vote the amendment. That's all we're going to do is vote on the amendment. It's not, we're not approving or disapproving the senior center. All we're doing is voting to hear the amendment. If you want to hear the amendment, you're going to say aye or yea. If you don't want to hear it, you say nay. The amendment, oh, the amendment just to vote on the $16 million, right?
No, no.
See? I can admit I'm wrong.
I'm sorry, my mic's not working, but, so the first vote that you'll take is whether or not you want to allow the amendment to go forward to a vote, right? So the first vote is, the first vote is whether or not to allow the amendment to go forward. It's a 50% vote, a majority vote. Then, once the amendment is then properly before the town, you vote on, if it succeeds, you vote on what is called the substitute amendment, right? So that would be whether or not to allow the $16 million to be borrowed, and that would be a two-thirds vote. If the initial vote fails, you're going to go back to the main motion, okay, which is to refer it. And then that would be a majority vote. So the first question before you is whether or not to allow the amendment that I read.
The long and confusing one.
Mr. Moderator?
May I try?
What it is? I don't know. What in layman's terms?
Mr. Moderator?
I don't know how to say it any different.
Mr. Moderator?
So right now, we're going to, right now, I have to take the question for the former greatest moderator in Millis history.
It's Donna.
That's why we're so good.
Yeah, Mr. Dugan is not here. I, the way I look at it is, if you want to vote on the $16 million proposal, then you vote yes on the amendment, because what that does is it then puts the $16 million proposal before you.
That's correct.
And then you can vote on the $16 million proposal up or down. That is the way I look at it.
And that is Mr. McCaffrey. He knows his name. He's excellent. All right, so we're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor, this is simple majority, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, please say no. How about on the back?
So, I don't know, are you going to call that, or are you going to count that?
I am going to ask for people to raise their hands and count and do the same thing. So, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand.
(inaudible)
Yeah.
They don't understand. They don't understand. They don't know what they're voting for.
Yeah, they're still confused on what they're voting for.
I know.
Thank you. Okay, if you're, now, if you're against the amendment, raise your hand. You can't tell anything from that.
Yeah, so, and you put the no's carried there? Yeah, so then, if you say aye, it fails, it fails.
Nate? How about the cafeteria?
Let me confirm by...
Oh, he was counting.
We're going to have to stand.
Do you want to count here?
I could use a break. I could use a stress word.[695.04][695.04](laughter)
I'm going to vote twice, if I can say that twice.
I still don't know what we're voting on, or how to, I still don't know what's going on. A number of people around me don't either.[709.12][709.12](applause)
Nate?
No, no votes carried.
And I determine that no is carried here also. So, the motion, the amendment fails.[725.82][725.82](applause)
Point of order, if seven people stand, they can contest what he just said and have a standing count.[742.82][742.82](laughter) Does anybody care? If seven people stand, they can contest what the moderator just determined.
Is it possible to ask a question before we do this?
It's already, it's already been voted.
There can be no point of clarification despite all this confusion?
No.
Okay.
Is any, there was folks standing, is there anybody like to contest? So, being no contest, the motion still fails, the amendment. So, now we're back to the original...
What happened in the cafeteria? Did anyone say anything in the cafeteria? Are there seven people standing?
So, now, we back to the original motion on the floor for referral. Would anybody like to speak on that? To clarify, if you want to refer this, you're going to vote yea. If you don't want to refer this, you're going to vote no. All those in favor of referring this, say aye.
Aye!
All those that don't want to refer, say nay. What do you have on the back, Nate?
(inaudible)[825.00][825.00](laughter)
It's up to him.
All right, we're going to go ahead and do a standing count.
There we go. No, this is a simple majority. Are you guys ready? Are you guys ready?
So, if you're in favor of moving this, referring this, please stand.
Could you clarify what the consequence of a no here actually is? Please?
There's no more questions, ma'am.[878.41][878.41](laughter)
Don't refer it. It happens.
There's no more questions, we're taking a vote.[892.62][892.62](laughter) Excuse me.
I don't, I don't know. (inaudible)
Yeah, she wants, um...
It's off, you have more than half standing.
But if they have them, they're standing against that matter. You got one that, you're standing.
I would say, I would say, if it's a senior two...[953.12][953.12](laughter)
Really, hey? Folks, folks, really, I am going to try to clarify this for you.[964.25][964.25](laughter) But I need to be quiet, okay? Now, what we're asking you right now, to stand if you would like to refer this as the warrant was originally written, so it's going to be continued in layman's terms, it's going to be relooked at, and maybe be brought back to town meeting. If you want to do that, please stand.
What does a no vote mean?
A no vote means it just goes away.[996.54][996.54](laughter) All right, let's...
No, it means that another motion can be made.
Has the count been completed? All right, remain standing.
What am I listening to? (inaudible)
Were you there?
Yes.
Because, you know...
Folks, if you're in the aisle, you're holding up the process, please get to your seats. How we doing?
Almost beat us.
Oh, he loves it.
Yeah.
I've never seen her refer.
I think we have.
I've never seen her refer.
I don't like new things.
I think that's it.
(laughter)
A lot of people, no, no, she was moderating.
Before John, and she went, it was awkward, she knew people like one minute each other. And she's just, well, stay where people, move on, and back to that person's side. She's going to do this, and we just didn't tell her.
But it was important. (laughter)
That's helping out, we got drunk on beer, and I don't need it.
No, I didn't, I went all the way.
I'm a fan right now of Four Roses.
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah. You scooch out that way.
Not yet, because I'm a little...
Yeah, that's it. I said, I had Four Angels last night.
Right, but that's all I really had, so I'm a little bit shocked. I've gone around, that's all it's obvious, it's like a standard... It was good, but, right, I'd rather get some more.
She likes, um, jazz in her eyes, really cheap. I'm a ginger in summer, and I'm a curvy during the winter, so... Hendrix is like my top, I love Hendrix. Because I like Hendrix, but I can't, um, Flimmy, like Flimmy, Indian is another good one. I have a whole collection up in there. Oh, my God, I can't wait to swallow.
I hope you don't get attacked. Willis, headway spot.
I can't wait, I'm going to watch that.
Excuse me, folks. Folks, this, this is going to be a long, arduous process, okay? When we ask you to stand, you got to stand, remain standing until we get a count, until I let you know you can sit down, okay? So, we have to go through this process again.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator.
One more time, if you're standing now, you're voting for yes, okay?
Mr. Moderator, I'm Christine McCaffrey, election warden. Could I ask a question, please? I've been in the, I've been in the cafeteria.
Yes, ma'am.
This is such a confusing question.
It is.
No one knows how they're supposed to vote. I have a gentleman in there who's been sitting, standing, sitting, standing. He does not know whether to vote yes or no. Is there some way that the Finance Committee can make this a lot simpler by not referring or just doing something that people understand? Please?[1454.41][1454.41](applause)
Thank you. Folks, folks, please, please, I'm going to read the original motion that is known. Listen to me, it's very simple. I move that the town vote to refer this article for further study by the Select Board, the Council on Aging, and the Permanent Building Committee, so it may be considered at future town meeting. If you agree with that, then you're going to be a yes person, and you're going to stand when I ask you. If you do not agree with this, you're going to be a no person, and when I ask you to stand for no, no, and then it goes away. So, it's either we're sending it back for referral to look at it again, that would be a yes. If you do not want to refer it, you want this to disappear, go away, be brought up some other time, then you vote no. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I have one brief point of clarification.
Okay.
It wasn't addressed.
One more time.
Please.
If, excuse me, really, I don't like using a gavel. I'll use a gavel, but I don't like to, okay? If you would like to refer this as I read it, to move it, okay, that would be a yes. So, please stand for yes now. Remain standing until I ask you to sit down, okay? Clerks, you ready? We're starting over, let's go. And please stay out of the aisles, so the clerks can go up and down.
I know. I understand what you're doing, I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to, I'm just opposed to this whole process.
And there's a door there, and you can take the last one, like, and I think it's like...
Yeah. Yeah. When I take it down, I went, like, this is getting bad, it's getting long, and...
I'm slowly getting the referral, and I thought it was going to be a committee decision to have, which is going up or down.
But, yeah.
And it put a distance away, they still have to work it back out.
Well, now, I'm trying to take it.
It is. Semantics, semantics. I bet you when there's three quarters of the people out there, there's only a hundred people out there. I think you're...
Yeah.
I'm happy I heard you. Yeah, yeah. I remember that on this, we had some good discussion, the whole flag situation, we actually raised our voices to each other, and it was all good fun, not frustrating.
Great. None of them were here, though. None of them would show up this.
Gentlemen, let's sort of sort this out.
They actually have to put me in class, I'm one of them.
So, my question, and I asked Mike, is there a gentleman, given the...
I spent $12 on those two.
That's a good question, yeah.
Well, I, I'd like to pass.
Yeah, because we're going to go around the school, or fire station, police station.
Oh, yeah. So, the only thing you could do is either let it go, or...
Or, I think, yeah, I, we would have to change, or just put it aside.
Yeah. So, that's, so that's the only thing you could really do. Now, it's, it's actually mine, or it's not, or you put some hands, and it increases the cost, yeah, and they would up there, and whatever happens, they're going to have to track, and it's cheap.
Right, yeah.
There's no way the access to that can be, just, oh, it's cheap.
No, definitely not.
So, that's, that's my resolution, I hope Mike puts that through.
Yeah.
Because it answers that question.
What are we going to do with it?
And then I think the other thing we have to do, is just the Select Board legally can't afford, and it's, this is what's going on with the, the Tax Base, it says that, and this is, this is what we do is here. We should have made our bid to lower the millage rate and afford this on the way, I think we can do it. I don't have the numbers, but I thank you everybody.
I like the scene.
When I look at 200, 500, 600, coming out of the country, and that doesn't create the tax on the Lexus level.
Right, 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 yeah, exactly, yeah. Especially the way they raised the floor on the outside of this, that has gone over there, because before you could go down to, it was like $500, and now they cap it at $10,000, so excessive value. So you're driving low a bunker, and you're still paying as if it was 20 years old, not 20.
Right. We don't have any courses.
No, no, but I'm saying around town, too, and that still hasn't come into effect. That's not here.
The town will do, at least we have two more.
Which is why I'm really proud of doing the roads and the stabilization, kind of like you're really good about all of it.
I wish, I wish we'd said that after that $500, X has to decide.
I agree.
But, the way it was presented, it was up to the select board.
Still got nothing. We would just say, I'm not...
We did.
Too much food in the left door.
Or, we should have allowed that to be drawn.
I think once it was on, uh, once it was published and sent out, it should be removed. We should just like make it disposable based on the town's values. But, the God would have done the best, we couldn't just remove it. It's a lease equipment for, um...
You still got that bottle of bourbon I gave you? It sounds really good right now.
You're doing this, you're doing this right now.
I know, right?
You can't even have to wear a top. That really sucks. I bet it's gonna be a probably... Except it's got a sign on it.
You would have to go to, um...
I must have something.
Just because I'm working job, which I, I lost a lot of stuff. Something you need to do.
And nobody, your dad would do that all the time. The sign's not clear, but, like... I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've never seen a response. So, this is so outside the door.
So, you people are standing now, you can sit.
It was in Boston.
Now, the folks that want to vote no and want this dismissed, please stand. And remain standing, and please don't go in the aisle.
I don't think you have to.
My husband's doing it. I can't see him. He's almost in the back row. See the guy with the white, kind of gray t-shirt? Uh, see the guy with the pink shirt? He's only at one, he's three. There's a guy with the white...
Emotional care. We'll move on later.
My husband. He just lay.
Frank is standing.
Yeah, he didn't like this idea from the back door.
No, he didn't. But, an up and down vote, it's a big thing.
Right, but I think we should have done that.
Yeah, what Peter did with, with Wayne was just, he went way too far.
Great, great.
There's those numbers, the 16 million...
I was more offended when I just passed, and he didn't bother getting back to us. You know what I mean? That was...
Yeah, but finally did, in an email, not in a spreadsheet.
Yeah, the kids are not sleeping.
Wow. Are they watching this? I hope not.
No, no, that's just a sitter, she sent a picture over.
Okay. She looks like, a little bit like Pataki.
She does, she does. You want one too? I'm offering you.
No, thanks.
I'm addicted to these, both sides.
I'm not even touching any of this. We've got a dark side, I always feel.
What I did with the kids is they don't like Snickers or peanut butter cups, so for every, like, five, I give them a dollar from Halloween gift. Because otherwise they can bring it to the dentist, and the dentist will wear it, and he'll give them toys. They're not with the kids, so they said, oh, yeah, to the dentist. They're not giving them those Snickers or peanut butter cups. That's coming out.
Very good.
I just didn't like the taste, you know?
I wish, I wish we could have...
We don't have any hype, I asked to rip your sidewalks, we didn't think help. And we go over to Tycon de Roga, oh my gosh, it's thundering. I mean, the decorations, bonfires, there's a gel shelf, it's grand old time, you know?
That's an excuse, that's a little crazy.
It is.
And there's, there's a lot of, that was a tax associate, because the town is considering that.
I was looking around, because I wanted to make a film.
But, there's a, I showed a man talking around, that it's got access, and the woman loans is dead. And it's a tax default. You could put those two together.
Once she, she goes, I agree with you, I know. Yeah, she is, but then she's...
I think, I think we will fight that, right? Except for we've got all those petition documents. Oh, shoot.
So, later in the year, you can petition all day.
Yeah, yeah.
I might want to get them on the, uh, go.
Huh? I'm forgetting it, Don. Are you? Oh, good, okay, yeah. Are you forgetting it? Okay, me too. How much?
We have to petition.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if I'm, this is, and they're not, in my house, like, the deer, they got, uh, a moving field, you put a ticket in, and you get like strip of lands, as a prop.
You're hired.
It's like a huge relic, the town, who owns those strips, after 40 years. Nope, and nobody knows where it comes from.
So, even if it seems a tax, it's not a tax.
Because it's behind us and on the side of it.
Yeah, so how do you have three sides?
Because, like, we're on the corner, right? So here's the streets. Our house is here, but there's a paper road here, there's a paper road here that goes to George Street, that's over here, and then there's another one that's Congress Street.
Congress Street is gonna be a good through street.
Right, so, but there was this road that would connect George Road to Village, but instead they dumped it out onto Pleather. So this is a paper road, this is a paper road, and this is, so we can have all that land returned to us.
But, Constitution, you went way up there.
Right, but there, there's another house, like, here.
Really?
Yeah, that's like at an angle to us, that, that's on George Road, that kind of goes like that.
Okay.
But, so, they would get half of this, we would get half of this, but we would get the whole of these days. So that would give me enough to be able to put an addition on the house. Like a nice garage, then a park or something like that.
Somebody else owns this one.
Right, exactly, but, yeah, someone else owns this one, yeah. And their property line is up close to the other side as well, so they own a strip on the other side of the paper roads. So, we're, we're gonna publicly pay $10,000 worth of surveying costs, just to identify the property lines, and put slips in. Get my mother-in-law, it'd be worth it. Well, I'm a lucky man who actually gets a home.
Oh, my mother-in-law.
Gotta be an easier way.
My dad's not good, he came there when I was 15, he was young.
She could take care of it.
We really need to count as a simple majority. It's a simple majority in our town, we should have been able to count the two-thirds, the school, the schools. I think he's lost it as well.
Chris McCaffrey was mad when I told her I couldn't work the election in the spring, because Aaron's gonna be on the ballot.
My, uh, my wife talked to Chris about being an election worker.
Good, she's a lot of fun, I...
Yeah, I told her she has to dye her hair gray.
They'll throw tomatoes back.
Number nine, that should be easy.
Nine and 10 are very light lefts.
Minor light lefts. All of a sudden, confused.
10 would make one more veteran out of a hometown, and nine, zero.
Yeah, well, this would cost anything.
Yeah, exactly.
The fact that shit like that has to go to a community. You're really much better off than here, because you have this in part.
Just a dog, right. I think the amendment threw it off, too. The amendment really confused the issue, too, yeah. Watering the water, yeah.
This is irrelevant, because you, either way, this is irrelevant.
Oh, that's been pointed out to me repeatedly. But, we all agree, this is a lot of, it's confusing, when Jay said, it's no different once happened, but the other times, that's similar problems.
But that's, yeah. But that's, that's odd, so, I think they'll get here.
My chair, my chair disappeared. I, uh, I, I annotated this at home, and I went through it, and these were just odd issues. Um, I think what I had these as, relatively easy, these two.
Folks, you can sit down now.
You don't really need to quit and walk away. It's nice having an air through that door.
All right, folks, I have the results. They're inconclusive, we gotta do again. I'm only kidding. No, so, yes, one, and yes was meaning to go ahead and move this forward and keep looking at it, basically. That was 164. No, to dismiss it completely, is 312. And personally, I'd like to thank you for your patience. And I just, there's a lot of new town meeting members here, so this is a fun thing about town meeting. Someone else can bring this up later again in town meeting. So if you all decide to leave now, someone else could do it, and it has happened in the past. So I'm just warning you.
Mr. Moderator, can I have a point of order?
Let's go quickly. Fin calm, next motion.
Have a point of order. Can I have a point of order?
Mr. Moderator. Let's go, we're trying to move forward.
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of order.
I move that the town vote to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 59...
Can I have a point of order? Mr. Moderator, can I have a point of order?
You can try, go ahead.
I can certainly try. My point of order is...
Where are you from, sir?
We voted no.
Where are you from, sir? Your address?
Edward Gin, 24 Glen Allen Boulevard.
Thank you.
I'm tired of saying it. Mr. Moderator, we just voted on a no, not to refer. We did not vote on the merits of the motion. You interpreted it as a motion to dismiss it. I don't interpret it that way.
Thank you.
And you did?
Thank you.
Well, I don't understand the...
Mr. Ondale.
I move that the town vote to adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, which would provide a real estate tax exemption for Gold Star families.
Motion made second, discussion?
If approved, this article would make parents or guardians of Gold Star veterans exempt...
Folks, folks, please, this is about veterans especially, okay? Give us your attention.
Exempt from property taxes. As of now, there are no Millis residents that this would apply to. But if a parent or guardian of a Gold Star veteran moves to Millis, the state will reimburse Millis the full cost of the exemption for the first five years, and 50% of that exemption after that five-year period. Clause 22D already covers the spouses of Gold Star veterans. Adopting this clause, 22H, will cover the parents or guardians who have lost a son or daughter who died serving their country. Surviving towns who have adopted this exemption include Norfolk, Medfield, Medway, and Holliston, along with 70% of all towns in the state. The remaining 30% are up for a vote this year, and none have been rejected so far. This article was recommended for approval by the Finance Committee unanimously.
Thank you. It's already been second. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Oh, God.
Majority of vote, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
I need a drink.
I'm not sure what that means.
I'm sorry. No, no, sir.
So it passed. Thank you. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Ondale.
I move that the town vote to reduce the residency requirement for local real estate tax exemptions for veterans from two years to one year, in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5.
Motion made in second, further discussion?
Millis is reimbursed for these exemptions at various rates by the state, depending on the exception the veteran is eligible for. This reduction in the residency requirement will make one additional veteran eligible for property tax reduction. This article was approved, again, by 70% of all towns in the state, with the 30% up for a vote this year, none have been rejected. This article was recommended for approval by the Finance Committee unanimously.
Thank you. Any further discussion, none. It's a simple majority vote, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $85,000 for an environmental impact settlement and Phase 2 report for the property located at 12 through 14 Exchange Street.
Second.
Motion made second, further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. The intent of this article, if passed, is for the town to honor the abuttered settlement agreement and ensure any environmental impact is remediated. The Finance Committee unanimously supports and recommends approval of this article. Passage requires a majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, simple majority vote. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from marijuana impact fees free cash to reimburse Advisa for its initial deposit related to its HCA agreement with the town.
Second.
Motion made second, further discussion? Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
This article, if approved, will transfer the sum of $25,000 from marijuana impact fees for the purpose of reimbursement to Avisah with their initial deposit paid to the town in connection with the cannabis HCA agreement or host community agreement by and between Avisah and the Town of Milis, which has been terminated by Avisah after Avisah made the determination they were unable to proceed forward with the chosen location due to the current state marijuana zoning restrictions. Therefore, their application to move forward was withdrawn. Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing no further discussion? All's in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next motion?
Mr. Moderator.
What's that?
You gotta say motion carries.
Oh, motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $128,721.70 to fully fund the fiscal year 2022 snow and ice deficit.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This is an annual adjustment to the snow and ice budget because of the unpredictable weather for each winter season. The town had originally budgeted $218,727 for this, which has been a consistent number over the years. Funding the deficit of $128,721.70 will balance the snow and ice budget for fiscal year 2022. Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval for this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing seeing none. All's in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
I declare this motion passed.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town appropriates $139,000 to pay costs and the costs associated with lead line service inventory and replacement plan and the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, including but not limited to data screening, inventory development, and GIS mapping. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 60, Section 8, Subparagraph 4, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. All or a portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The Select Board is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state or federal aid that is or may become available for the purposes. And the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any federal or state grants received on account of this project. Further, the $139,000 appropriation included as part of the FY23 budget is hereby replaced with this appropriation and is of no further effect.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, okay. That language is confusing. It's a lot of legalese. This project was approved in the town meeting. There is no lead in the water. What this does is it's a study of older lines that lead from the public service into homes, and it's required by the state. Under the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the town was able to secure a grant that will repay these funds. But in order to do that, we have to borrow the funds and then they repay the borrowing. So it's a, it's a lot of administrative things. At the end of the day, it will restore the $139,000 less some administrative cost to the Water Enterprise Fund. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended approval of this project. It takes a two-third vote because there's debt involved. I need to amend that motion because I read it wrong. It's General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8.4.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All's in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
And the motion does carry here also.
Okay. Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, it has to declare by two-thirds. I declare that. And Nate, you have to declare as two-thirds also.
Two-thirds.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Water Enterprise Reserve the sum of $56,864 for Water Management Act permit renewal support.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes. The Massachusetts DEP has proposed major changes to the town's authorization to withdraw water, which could have an adverse impact on all of us. In summary, the DEP is proposing reducing the amount of water that the Town of Milis can pump by 15% at a time that the town is experiencing and will continue to experience significant growth. It will also eliminate the current ability that the town has to sell water to the Town of Franklin. And third, it will limit outdoor watering to two days a week from May 1st to September 30th. The state is requiring answers with documentation and data to 11 questions contained in their 20-page letter to the town. This request provides funding to assist in responding to the state and helping to negotiate a less restrictive water usage permit. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Thank you. That was a simple majority vote, and it passed.
Article 16, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise Reserves the sum of $165,000 for the preliminary design of PFAS treatment plant at well number three.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Well number three, located off Birch Street, is testing high in levels of PFAS, which will need to be addressed. The Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Environmental Protection are implementing, yes, stricter guidelines in terms of PFAS chemicals in drinking water. If approved, Water Enterprise Reserves will fund this article in the amount of $165,000. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? All those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Simple majority vote. I declare passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Article 17. I move that the town appropriate $250,000 to pay costs associated with the asset management program Phase 3, purchase and development of a sewer and stormwater asset management system, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, $100,000 shall be transferred from Stormwater Reserves and the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $150,000 under and pursuant to General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. All or any portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The Select Board is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state or federal aid that is or may become available for these purposes, and the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any federal or state grants received on account of this project. The $150,000 appropriation included as part of the FY23 sewer enterprise budget to pay costs of this project is hereby replaced with this appropriation and is of no further effect.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Second, let's me, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, second.
If approved, this article would fund expansion to the sewer and stormwater infrastructure inventory, assess the overall infrastructure, and develop a five-year capital improvement plan. The cost is $250,000, of which $150,000 will be a borrowing from the Sewer Enterprise Reserves and $100,000 from the Stormwater Enterprise Reserves. Funding of 60% of the initiative will be reimbursed through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this article? Seeing now, take a vote. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
This is a two-thirds vote. Did the, go by two-thirds, cafeteria?
So this is over two-thirds.
And the vote here is also over three, so it passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Article 18. I move that the town vote to transfer the remaining balances of closed projects from the following sewer capital articles. $32,995.39 from Article 8 of the Annual Town Meeting of November 3, 2014. $49,093.22 from Article 17 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 10, 2004. And $48,245 from Article 32 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 12, 2014, for a total sum of $130,333.61 for engineering services for an infiltration and inflow investigation project.
Second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
If approved, this article in the amount of $130,333.61 will be funded through rescinded borrowing of completed sewer enterprise fund projects, which requires a town meeting vote. An II investigation is required by the Department of Environmental Protection and the Charles River Pollution Control District to minimize the flow that is not necessarily sewage but stormwater. The town performs this investigation on a regular basis, and the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Simple majority vote. Passes. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to the unemployment account.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
This is a regular transfer based on availability of free cash. This amount varies each year based on these numbers. For this year, it's $25,000. Milis is self-insured and is required to pay all unemployment claims for both the town and school. The current balance of the unemployment account through August 2022 is $90,933.60. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All's in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Cafeteria?
Motion carries.
As it does here. Thank you. Motion carries. Next article?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to accept Pearl Street, Deborah Lane, and Teresa Drive as public ways according to MGLC 82 S 23. Said ways being depicted. Oh, I'm, oh, but that is. All right. Sorry, I have to start over. I move that the town vote to accept Pearl Street, Deborah Lane, and Teresa Drive as public ways in accordance with the MGLC 82 S 23. Said ways being depicted on plans entitled Pearl Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Milis, Massachusetts, Deborah Lane Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Milis, Mass, and Teresa Drive Street, I'm sorry, Teresa Drive Street Acceptance Plan of Land in Milis, Mass, all dated August 11, 2022, a copy of which had been placed on file with the town clerk's office at least seven days prior to the town meeting. And further, to authorize the Select Board to accept deeds and/or easements in such ways, along with any aperture. Thank you. Drainage or utility easements that the Select Board deems necessary for such purposes. And further, that the acceptance of such ways as public ways and the acceptance of the deeds and/or easements by the Select Board be contingent upon the provisions of updated, final as-built, and the successful completion of a video examination of stormwater structures as determined by the DPW Director.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
The Hickory Hill subdivision is located off Acorn Street and includes Deborah Lane, Pearl Street, and Teresa Drive. The Select Board is requesting the acceptance of this subdivision, making it town-owned. Once a street is accepted by the town in the town, it is the town's obligation to maintain it, including catch basins, snow removal, and road maintenance. Catch basins are $11.50 per basin. There are 35 catch basins. This year, the town will not incur that $402.50 because they have already been cleaned. Snow removal. An outside snow contractor will be hired at a rate of $105 per hour with a four-hour minimum requirement, costing $420 per event. The cost of the town would be determined by how many events occur. An example would be if the high school had 10, or if they had 10 events, it would be The road maintenance. The town at this time does not foresee any road maintenance due to the roads being new. There has been a letter received by the manager of Acorn of Milis that the video inspection of the drainage system has been completed. The video and report shall be delivered to the town by the contractor. The updates to the submitted as-built plans are expected by December 1 of 2022. The documents will be submitted to the town as soon as they are ready. These documents will be submitted to the town, as I say, as soon as they can get them to us. A majority vote is required for this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McGinnis.
Hello, okay. Kathy McGinnis, 78 Island Road. I rise to speak in opposition to approval of this article. Please allow me to explain the eight-year history of this subdivision. Construction began in the fall of 2014, eight years ago. Less than one year later, in July of 2015, the planning board permitted residential construction of the lots, seven years ago. That means that the planning board engineer approved all of the infrastructure and permission was given to build homes, subject to the rules and regulations of the Building Department and the Department of Public Works. The final house sold on or about May of 2020, two and a half years ago. My further research found that the developer had been saying for the last three town meetings that he was going for street acceptance, but quote, "never followed up and submitted the plans to the planning board." Why is this requirement not yet completed? So to the best of my calculations, the road surface and everything underground within the subdivision, again, not including the individual lots, are over eight years old. I'm wondering if crack seal inspections should be done and how are the sidewalks? In conclusion, Mr. Moderator, I have confidence that in the future, our elected and appointed officials will require any residential, commercial, and industrial developers either to meet the deadline requirements for town meeting acceptance of roadways or be heavily fined for not doing so. And only at that time, when the town warrant closes and all requirements have been met, shall a town meeting article for road acceptance be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Mr. Moderator?
Shayna Canisteri, 9 Pearl Street. I am part of the division that is being spoken about right now and have been in the community for over four years now. and have been in the community for over four years now. My first house was on Pearl Street. And we have been working with the builder in that timeframe to get everything done. We've worked, you know, very hard over the last six months to have it all done. And Bob has worked with the town to make sure that it's understood that it will be done by December first. As a Millis resident who pays the high taxes in this town, I do appreciate everyone here supporting the fact that since we pay those taxes, that we would like our streets turned over to the town for management. Our streets are in great shape. Our children are playing on the sidewalks every day. They are in great shape. And as far as what's going underground in the sewers, the video has been completed. It should be handed over to the town by December first. We're not anticipating any issues. But again, we all pay the Millis taxes, and we would really appreciate it if we could have them turned over to the town.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols.
Mr. Moderator. Richard Nichols, Forty-seven Grove Street. I'm the chairman of the planning board. What Ms. McGinnis brought up earlier is true. Every town meeting, we contacted the developer, and he promised us that the plans were going to be brought in and dropped off. There was no specific provision for us to, as she brought up, you know, punish him, so to speak, for not having that done. We finally pulled together a meeting after the pandemic and can finally manage to wrangle him and to do that. The town, the engineer for the planning board has gone through... They've inspected all the roads, so they've had a professional engineer go through. The town DPW has also looked at it. They've also checked all of the pipes that report is actually in. And the as-built, they have... We have a letter from the engineer that it will be delivered by December first. So I don't think it's fair to punish people who bought homes in this development for the lack of performance of the builder. I don't think that's fair at all. And we've had professionals look at... We've had professionals look at these roads, which they do for the town when we're building them and other things. And so they've deemed that those roads are acceptable for the town to accept. So like I said, I appreciate the previous comments that, yes, it is an older road, but we've looked at it. It looks good, and we should be fair to the people who bought property in Millis. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Stan Jablonski, Thirty Glen Allen Boulevard. Want to follow up on the previous speaker's comment about punishing taxpayer and residents. Here in our Glen Allen community, we have nine roads and streets. We pay to maintain them, not the town of Millis. We pay to have the snow removed. We pay for any lighting, curbing, lining, stormwater, street sweeping. So who's being punished more? The person who pays taxes and gets benefits or the person who pays taxes and gets no benefits? I vote no.
Thank you.
Stand up, please. I should be able to answer the question.
Mr. Nichols.
Richard Nichols, Forty-seven Grove Street, Northwest Planning Board. Glen Allen isn't finished. They have not put the roads forwards to the town for approval. So... Because it's still ongoing. When that happens, they will put the roads forwards, and they'll do the same thing. They'll have to check the road conditions. They'll have to camber the sewers. Once that happens, then that will be taken over by the town.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Yeah. James McKay.
Excuse me. Ms. McKay?
Director of Public Works. Those Glen Allen will never be turned over to the town. Those roads will remain private. That's the... It's just the way the division was built. It was... They were given waivers to... For the condensed building of the project. So those roads will never be turned over to the town of Millis.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator? May you please announce what the vote was of the Finance Committee on this article?
Mr. Burrowby?
We voted to reconsider the original motion that passed. I don't recall the vote on the reconsideration. We had an amended motion that is before us here, and it was voted five to four to approve or accept this motion as written before you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah. I just want to point out one important factor here. Even if town meeting votes to accept these roads, the select board are the ones that have to sign the documents to accept these. Until we sign the documents, no matter what this town meeting decides, the transfer is not... I believe the word was perfected. I'm learning legalese tonight. But it's not a perfected transfer until we sign the articles. And we're not going to sign it, and we voted not to sign it, until our DPW director is 100% satisfied with the cambering of the sewers and the plans as submitted. So this is not a blank slate to just take his word for it that they're fine. We're going to wait until our DPW director says everything's fine, then we'll sign it. And we felt that the residents of that community shouldn't have to wait through this entire winter. Now, if the plans don't come back good, if the cambering doesn't pass, I'm sorry. We're not going to sign it. But if everything comes back right, in a timely fashion, and your developer does what he's supposed to do, then we would go forward with Mr. McKay's recommendations and accept the streets. But we didn't think it was fair for people that purchased property with the understanding these are going to be public roads, not private like Glen Allen, to penalize them while their developer is dragging his feet. And, boy, I wish he was better and quicker and faster. But I'd like to try to get this done before winter hits.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Shayna Canisteri, Nine Pearl Street. Basically what you said, we did sign when we bought our houses with the assumption it would be turned over to public roads and not to private like Glen Allen. So, thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Kathy McGinnis, Seventy-Eight Island Road. I just ask why we can't expect commercial, residential, and industrial developers to bring forth a completed project that these people can sit through, read the warrant when they get it in the mail, Mr. Moderator, and come here knowing this is what they're going to vote on? Rather than amendment after amendment? What does that mean? Stand, sit? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Kevin Jones, Thirty Pearl. I was just wondering if acceptance of the streets will also increase the town's funding through, what is it, Chapter ninety funding?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further. Cafeteria, I got to ask you. Any further discussion?
No further discussion.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor of accepting these roads as public right-of-ways, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Cafeteria?
Motion passes unanimously.
It does not pass unanimously up here, but it does pass. Thank you. Next article?
Uh huh. I have to wait to be acknowledged. Oh, did he? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to Open Trust Fund Account, which is OPED.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
If approved, this article would add funds to the OPED fund in the amount of $50,000 from free cash. Currently, the town is covering claims, as needed, from the general operating budget, but should be setting aside additional funds for the future OPED obligation. Virtually not... Virtually all of these funds are used for retirement health insurance. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on OPED? A simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries here also.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $300,000 to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F, Injury Leave and Demity Fund.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This article, if approved, will transfer the sum of $300,000 into the Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F, Injury Leave and Demity Fund, which fund was established after approval at the fall two thousand twenty-one town meeting as a reserve fund for the purpose of paying police officers and firefighters who have sustained injuries in the performance of their duty, the additional funds required above workers' compensation in order to achieve 100% of their base salary during the period of their injury leave instead of appropriating these funds from the respectable department budgets. The average annual amount for paid injury leave in Millis over the last few years has been $96,000, and this year's current projected estimate is $122,000. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Cafeteria?
No discussion.
All those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a majority vote. Also passes here.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to establish a special-purpose stabilization fund for the purchase of ambulances effective for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
This article is to establish a special-purpose stabilization fund for the future purchases of ambulances. We are not funding this account right now. We are not buying an ambulance right now. We are simply setting up this account for future ambulance purchases. Currently, there is an ambulance revolving fund. This fund is used to pay for anything ambulance-related, such as EMTs, supplies, and other ambulance expenses. Based on revolving fund budget, any extra money would be used from this fund to contribute to the ambulance special-purpose stabilization fund. This amount could vary based on the ambulance income and expenses every year. Establishing this fund is appropriate for property savings and planning for future, such as five years, ten years, fifteen years out. Any savings will help offset the future price of the next ambulance. Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
What was the vote?
The vote is a two-thirds vote.
No. How the FinCom vote? Unanimous?
Eight to one.
Eight to one. Okay. Hey, this one ain't costing us nothing. This is good. This is a two-thirds vote because it will require funding. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As it does up front. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $300,000 to the stabilization fund.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
If passed, this article achieves Millis's stated stabilization fund goal of 5% of general fund budget expenditure. The stabilization fund itself was created by this body at a previous town meeting. If approved, we expect no additional funds will be required for this fund until fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Stabilization funds can be appropriated for anything but are typically reserved for emergency or unforeseen circumstances. Should this motion pass, there would be a small but welcome effect on our town's bond rating, and the Finance Committee unanimously supports and recommends approval of this article. Passage requires a majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As in the front. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Regarding Article twenty-five.
Oh, I have to read the motion first.
Mr. Mo...
Yes. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator? I move that the town vote to dismiss Article twenty-five.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This article is a citizen's petition. A petitioned article is an article brought to the town meeting for discussion and possible action by a citizen rather than a board or committee of the town. Any registered voter may bring a petitioned article on any topic that is relevant to action by the Millis voters at open town meeting, the town's legislative body. A petition to add an article to an annual town meeting warrant must be signed by at least ten registered voters of the town, which are then also certified by the town clerk and are required to be placed on the town warrant. This petitioned article is requesting appropriation of $3,500,000 or any other amount thereof for the purpose of designing, purchasing, and constructing an enclosed sports facility to house four or more combination pickleball and tennis courts to be located at property commonly known as Cassidy Farm, the Braun Property, or such other similar location deemed appropriate by the Town of Millis officials. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends dismissal of this article due to reasons including, but not limited to, the lack of due diligence with regards to going through a process providing actual proposals or plans, nor was it presented to the Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Pete Jermaine, Twenty-one Causeway Street. I'm one of the original filers of this petition. It was put in place because of the original articles in wording in Article eight. As a result, I am recommending withdrawal of this article.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Cafeteria?
No discussion.
We good? Like to make... All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of this motion? I mean, I'm sorry. All those to dismiss this motion? I'm confused. It's been a long night, folks. I got to tell you. It's because I'm reading this. So the motion on the table is, I move that the town vote to dismiss this Article twenty-five. So if you want to dismiss this, please say aye.
Aye.
If you don't want to dismiss this, please say no. Here also. Thank you. I'm sorry. I was reading in a...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Article twenty-six. I move that the town vote to dismiss Article twenty-six.
Motion made second.
Mr. Moderator. This article as well was brought to the warrant as a citizen's petition. The petitioner has to require ten signatures verified by the town clerk's office. A valid citizen's petition is required to be added to the warrant if it has the needed signatures. This article was not brought up to the warrant by any committee or town official. If approved, this article would appropriate by borrowing $3,500,000 to upgrade the senior center located in the Veterans Memorial Building. This citizen's petition considers an alternative already considered and dismissed by the Council on Aging. While this petition illustrates the need for a solution for Millis's growing senior population and the current conditions of the senior center, the plan presented by this petition is a continuation of the current problems faced by our senior center and does not address the needs for multi-use spaces to better provide varied services to the senior population of Millis. This article was recommended for dismissal by the Finance Committee unanimously.
Any further discussion on this article? Okay. The motion is, same as the last time, to move the vote to dismiss this article. You'll say aye.
Aye.
Not to dismiss this article, say nay. Cafeteria?
No discussion.
Vote was unanimous up front, too. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to dismiss Article twenty-seven.
Is there a sec? Motion seconded?
Mr. Moderator, as with the other two petitions, this was a valid petition. However, it did not go through committees. However, it did not go through committees. It would appropriate, or really asked the select board to investigate appropriating $2.9 million or any other amount for the purpose of designing, upgrading, constructing, and otherwise renovating the Lansing Memorial Building. The Finance Committee recommends dismissal of this article.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Jim Duffy, 343 Exchange Street. I'm certainly in favor of dismissing this article, however, I do have a few questions on this facility as well as other facilities. I asked a question at one of the meetings a while ago. We do not have a facilities person or committee kind of overseeing and responsible for facilities planning, as best I can tell. There's $2 million on the capital spending plan for this building as well. My question, I'll finally get to it, I'm sorry, who is responsible for planning on what to do with this particular building?
Are you asking me about the building we're sitting in, or the Lansing building?
The Lansing building, this article. Because it's just sitting there, there does not seem to be a plan that I'm aware of. Maybe someone's aware of a plan, but I'd like to understand who's responsible for coming up with a plan, if there's not a plan, so that we do something with this building.
Ms. Scholz?
The select board has custody and ownership of all town buildings. It would be us up to the select board to work on that. We have worked through the permanent building committee on this at one point to investigate to get that $2 million estimate. Now, we are working through what else can be done. There's grants being applied for to at least restore the facade. There's other grants to button up the building to keep it weather tight, and it's an ongoing investigation of what can be done with it. The Economic Development Committee is also looking at possible tenants that might take over the building, but at this point, it's the select board moving forward with the project. In halting fashion, I'll concede, but we don't have the money to do everything that needs to be done with it. We don't even know what the final plan is to be done with it. So we've worked with the permanent building committee, the Economic Development Committee, and other groups that might be interested to come up with potential uses.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Cafeteria? So once again, if you'd like to have this motion dismissed, please say aye.
Aye.
If you'd like to keep this motion, please say no. Right? Motion passes. Cafeteria, I'm sorry. Yeah, up front too, thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
It's the last one, folks. And before we're done, everyone's out of here, I want to thank you all for your patience with me, and I want to thank you all for showing up, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the town vote to dismiss Article 28.
Most made second, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
This petitioned article was duly certified by our town clerk to be included on the warrant, and if passed, would authorize the town to purchase the property at 270 Exchange Street, which is currently known as Rock Lawn. Subsequent to their submission of this article, the petitioners have requested this article be dismissed at this time to allow the current property owner to pursue a third-party sale of the property. The Finance Committee unanimously recommended dismissal of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Hardin, 56 Walnut Street. I was the one who proposed this article and got quite a bit of support. And about three weeks ago, yes, the owner decided that he did not want, he previously had been interested in the town buying it. He had a change of plans and decided he wanted to pursue a third-party buyer. But if that falls through, I just wanted to let people know that it will come up again. And in the meantime, I am going to be proposing that we work on our railroad station and get some funds to repair that. So I just want to let people know that, yes, we do need to put some money into our old buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Once again, move to dismiss this, please say aye.
Aye.
To keep it, say no. Cafeteria? It's unanimous up front.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. McGinnis? Most have been made to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
The board is adjourned.